Sort of project. There is a lot of, there's a lot of discussion around this. I ask everybody tonight, please be respectful, courteous, and let's be professional as we're going through it. So before we begin testimony, I want to remind all the participants a little bit in terms of how this process works for the planning board, because it is different than other statutory boards, including the town council. So typically, the process by nature is a bit more judicial, in the sense that this is a, we will have witnesses come forward, present testimony, we will cross-examine those with our questions, we will have attorneys that are representing Sparta residents cross-examine them, as well as board members, and we'll also be engaging in feedback from our professionals as well. So it is a little bit different in that sense. The public will, and absolutely we want everybody to be heard. This is an extremely important part, I want to make sure everybody understands clearly. So historically and traditionally with any of these proceedings, after witness testimony is done, again, because this is more of a judiciary-based process, all questions, comments, everything would be reserved for the end, all public commentary and everything. We're actually going to switch things up a little bit tonight. You know, we've heard from the community, we understand the importance of your voice and your ability to be a part of this. So we're actually shifting up, which is a bit unprecedented for us, in terms of, you know, asking for and having the community component before we conclude the evidence portion of it. So what I mean by that is, at nine o'clock tonight, we're going to open up the board, we're going to open up the meeting to public comments or questions, specific questions for the testimony that's been provided. Again, keep in mind, this is more of a judicial-based setting. With that in mind, we're going to ask, please, these should be direct questions as a result of testimony. This is not for opinion statements, this is not for, you know, speeches for or against the specific project. This is for specific questions, to make sure that we're addressing the entire public and all the questions that you've got. We're in receipt of the questions that have been presented at the previous meeting, we forwarded those to the applicant, we suspect the majority of those are going to be covered, because the vast majority of those were covering both the traffic impact study, as well as the environmental study. So I think we will get most of those addressed this evening. If not, we'll also continue to address those throughout tonight during the public portion. So I wanted to share that with everybody, it's not lost on us, the impact, your voices, so we appreciate everybody coming out. With that, Tom, do we want to start with, we'll start with Mr. Ford was the last person of testimony that we left off?
Mr. Chairman, we have a legal question.
Sir, I'm sorry, I don't, I need to know who you are.
My name is Anna Dash.
Can we spell that for you, please?
A N, A N D, last name is Dash, D, A S E.
And you are?
I'm an attorney.
Representing?
Myself, and I'm here with my father, and I suppose it was Neil Clark.
And Mr. Dash, can you just provide your, your address for the record?
Of course, 17 Fonderoza Trail, Sparta, New Jersey, 0787.
So, Mr. Dash, please come forward to the, to the bar, and Mr.
I'm Neil Clark, I was spelled N-E-I-L-L-C-L-A-R-K, 224 Spring Road Trail, Sparta.
So gentlemen, please go ahead and address the board, and then if, and then if Mr. Cohen wants to, then Mr. Cohen, and then Mr. Cohen, the applicant's attorney, about your letter of a couple days ago, and explain your position to the board without presenting witnesses, and then, then Mr. Cohen, if Mr. Clark wants to add something, he may, these are legal, legal arguments, only at this stage, and then Mr. Cohen, if he wants to, and then Mr. Cohen, then the board will consider what to do. So please, please go ahead, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, good evening. Thank you, members of the public, for attending, you participated, very, very, very appreciative. This, this is not an emotional argument, this is an argument based solely in law, pure legal argument. The fundamental tenets of our municipal land use law provide certain enumerated powers for this planning board to hear. Those powers are set forth in NJ SA 4055 dash P, called 70C and 70D. Those powers of the planning board do not include an application to hear an interpretation before a, of an ordinance. I would like the record to reflect, on April 4th, 2022, myself and Mr. Clark filed with the zoning board of adjustment, a pending application for interpretation, for interpretation of the use of this application. When this matter first began, arguably, the board had, this planning board had jurisdiction. Our case law and the statutes provides, once an objector has filed an application for interpretation with the zoning board that addresses a fundamental threshold issue as to the nature of the use supply for, in fairness to the applicant, in fairness to the members of the public, and in fairness to this board, the time and the legal propriety, this board cannot proceed on this application tonight. We made that in a respectful manner before this board in our submission, we were making it here again. The case law is clear that we also have a right to make a direct appeal to this Superior Court on this jurisdictional issue. This is not a substance issue, we're not going to the merits of this application. We are dealing with a jurisdiction that is paramount before this board can proceed. We are asking the court with the law, the DePetro versus the Township of Planning, Wayne Township Planning Board, and the progeny of cases that follow, that this board no longer has the jurisdiction. However, it will potentially retain that jurisdiction after a determination has been made by the zoning board of adjustment. The DePetro case is found at 367 NJ Super 161, 2004. It's a published appellate division ruling that provides for facts that are on point with this case. In DePetro, the objectors sought to have the planning board decide the issue of interpretation as to the nature of the use. The court struck that objection and said, the proper forum for that application is the zoning board. We have followed that instruction to the T, we are guided not by passion, not by the adversarialness here, we are guided by the New Jersey appellate division, which controls this case, respectfully, okay? We have made that application to the zoning board out of deference, while we could have also gone straight to the Superior Court. But we would like, because this is a, this panel should be a government of its people, by its people, and for its people, we have respectfully made that application before our zoning board, so they can make a threshold determination as to whether this is for a permitted use under the ED zone, or for a conditionally permitted use in, in the ED zone, which would change the considerations. But my most salient point is this, any action taken by this board, after I am finished discussing, will be a nullity if this application has not been transferred to the zoning board. And I say, DePetro is standing good law in the state of New Jersey, it's unassailable, I respectfully ask that this application be adjourned, and I enter the evidence into the record, both written and oral.
Now, I'll just join. I join the arguments made by Mr. Dash, and.
Can you all speak up?
Sure. I, I join the arguments made by my colleague, Mr. Dash. I think that what the board does after this is simply going to be a waste of time. Your, your best recourse here is to let the zoning board rule, and then you can proceed. The applicant make his argument about what use it has, but any testimony that you take today is a waste of everyone's time, because what will happen is that you're without jurisdiction. If you're without jurisdiction, at any hearing, any testimony that you take has no basis. And so all that will happen is that you'll get a court order eventually that says, any testimony you take is null and void, you'll have to do this all over again. And we'd like to say, you time, the applicant time, and the people that are here's time. And so with respect to everyone here, I know, most people on here are volunteers, they put a lot of time and effort into it, and I hate to see you have to come back and do this all over again. And that's what we're trying to avoid. And so the best thing that you can do here tonight is make a motion to adjourn further proceeding on this application until such time as the zoning board has heard our application for interpretation. That's the best recourse for this board tonight, it saves you time in the future, and avoids witnesses having to come back and do the exact same testimony that they may give here, or they may have to change the entire nature of their testimony, depending on what the zoning board said. So for efficiency sake, for, to give a fair hearing to the applicant, and for a fair hearing for the public, the best course tonight is a motion to adjourn pending decision by the zoning board. Thank you.
And I just add, I just add, it's not, it's not a discretionary decision, this is a legal question that this board does not have the power to, to address. As Mr. Collins is, I respect him, he's been around a long time, and, and my, my teacher, Will Cox, who wrote the book in land use, I've had this discussion with him many times. We have to separate passion, politics, from the law. We are all here to respect the law, and, and I'm out of here, respect for, for the applicant. I appreciate they spent time and money here, but we are lawyers. Mr. Collins is a lawyer, Mr. Cohen, I respect him, a member of the bar, a colleague. Let's do this the right way, let's respect the law, it's not my words, it's the judges who have written the case in DePetro versus the Township of Planning, Wayne Township Planning Board. This isn't a plea for passion, at this point. This is a respect for the law.
Mr. Dash, Mr. Clark, thank you very much for, for sharing that. I, I appreciate it, and I, I fully share your sentiments with regards to, you know, the purpose behind this is to ensure that we do this by the law, factually based, and we want to save everybody time, money, aggravation, you know, they're, they're all, we're all volunteers here, so everybody's doing the best they can. I guess, Mr. Collins, I would defer to you in terms of the legal argument that's been presented by Mr. Dash, and by, by the other attorneys.
So, yeah, we need to hear from Mr. Cohen, and then Mr. Cohen, and then we will rule on it.
Lawrence Cohen, C-O-H-E-N, can you speak up?
What's that?
Yes. By the way, do you have a microphone?
Yeah, we normally do have a microphone out there.
That microphone should be live, I think it's by Diana.
Yeah.
So maybe we can move.
Shift that one.
Can we move that microphone to the middle?
To the center.
So that everyone that's in the lobby, and everyone that's in the room, can hear the testimony.
Is it plugged in? You don't need it during.
Thank you. Can you hear me better now?
We can, thank you, Ms. Collins.
All right. That, that is better, I'm going to pull this a little closer.
You can take it out of the stand.
Okay. I think this is fine. Good evening, Lawrence Cohen, C-O-H-E-N. As indicated in the previous meeting, I represent Michael Burns and Georgina Burns, who own property at 95 Demerit, which adjoins this site, and are obviously significantly impacted by this application. I did review Mr. Dash's letter, I did some research of my own, and I agree with Mr. Dash. This is an issue which requires an interpretation. As you know, your ordinance is kind of close with reference to definition, as to what is a warehouse and what is a truck terminal. There's a portion of this property, this proposed development, that I think certainly is, fits into a truck terminal definition. But it's not for me to say, it's not for Mr. Cohen to say, it's not for Mr. Collins to say, it's a determination that should, has to be made by the Board of Adjustment, which has the only board that has the power, especially in this particular situation, because you have two boards, and not a single land use board, that that power is granted to the Board of Adjustment. Quite frankly, if I were representing the applicant at this application, I would not object to a stay for a short period of time to determine whether, what the interpretation of the Board of Adjustment is, rather than going through all of this, going to the Board of Adjustment, or going to court to decide that issue. So I think it's in everyone's best interest to grant the application made by Mr. Dash. Obviously, I can't speak for the applicant, but I think of being the applicant's best interest, I'm sure the applicant doesn't want to do that, but this is a legal issue that has to be decided, and obviously, you're going to get an opinion from Mr. Collins, and we'll move on from there. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Mr. Cohen?
Sure. Steve Cohen, Chief Donald Howler, and Cecil, on behalf of the applicant, Township Realty LLC. Do I?
Yes, speak up just a little bit for us.
Does this, does this work?
Better, yes.
Can everybody hear me? Okay. Sorry about that. Steve Cohen, for the applicant. So I understand, I've heard the arguments, I understand everything Mr. Dash, Mr. Cohen, Mr. Clark said. Certainly, we have respect for the law here as well. Frankly, I have to say that, you know, when it comes to questions of law, certainly reasonable minds can differ, and we certainly, I certainly differ with Mr. Clark, Mr. Dash's, and Mr. Cohen's interpretation of law on this issue. I think the facts of DePetro, which is the case that Mr. Dash has cited, quite a bit different than what we have here. We were very clear in our initial presentation to the board, that we are seeking approval for a warehouse. A warehouse is a use that is defined in the Township's code, it is what we are seeking approval for, and it is a permitted use in the ED zone. So we are before this board, asking for approval of a warehouse. We are not asking for approval of a trucking terminal facility. If we were to get site plan approval before this board, and develop a project that met the definition of a trucking terminal facility, and not a warehouse, we would not be in compliance with the, with the zoning ordinance, we would be subject to a violation that would have to be issued by the township. But we're not here asking for that, we are here asking for a warehouse which is a permitted use. That being said, that's a substantive issue with their objection, that we're going to resolve, I guess, in a different forum before the zoning board of adjustment, if we even get there. But the idea that the planning board, all of you sitting up there, does not have the inherent jurisdiction to decide this type of question, is it's that, that very opinion that they, that they just elicited a few minutes ago, and told you that you don't have the inherent ability to do that, that is contrary to published appellate division case law. There is a published developed division case for loan, and, and for Mr. Dash, Mr. Clark, Mr. Cohen, it's 369 NJ Super 552. And that case, which is cited in Mr. Dash's mentor's book, William Cox's Guide on New Jersey Zoning and Land Use, stands for the proposition that the planning board has the inherent authority to construe the zoning ordinance for a pending application. Here, we're not even asking you to make a construction of the zoning ordinance, we are telling you, we are here seeking approval for a use that is permitted, we are going to provide testimony for a use that is permitted, and we are going to ask you to approve a use that is permitted, which is all the planning board has authority to do. In addition to that, the idea that we are going to somehow agree to a stay of this proceeding, frankly, the, the planning board, number one, does not have the statutory authority to issue a stay of the proceeding. The planning board has to act within certain definite statutory timeframes, and this type of an application, that timeframe is 95 days from a complete application. We've extended that timeframe through correspondence to Mr. Collins until May 15th. But the planning board has to act during that time. If the objectors want to pursue the zoning ordinance interpretation at the Board of Adjustment, if that gets resolved unfavorably to us for some reason, that's the risk that we take by proceeding tonight. But frankly, in my opinion, that appeal, as of right now, is completely untimely. We haven't even finished our application. To make an application to the zoning board at this, at this juncture, as if they know exactly what we're proposing to do, they've only heard, I don't know, one-third of our presentation, one-third of our testimony, they haven't even heard the entire application, and yet they presume that they can go to the zoning board for an interpretation of something that, that they don't fully understand yet. So the idea that we should not be allowed to put our entire case on, if the objectors want to appeal the planning board's decision in that matter, or if they want to seek a determination from the zoning board after the fact, fine, that's their prerogative, they have every right to do it. But the facts in DePetro are much different than what we have here. In DePetro, there was an applicant that was seeking approval for a self-storage facility in a commercial zone. The commercial zone permitted any commercial uses consistent with that zone, essentially. The objectors said, that's not a self-storage facility, that's not a permitted use, that's a commercial warehouse, and a commercial warehouse is expressly not permitted in this zone. So planning board, you need to look at this application and determine whether or not that is actually a permitted use that they're proposing. Make that determination, the planning board had a separate vote in the middle of the proceeding, to rule on interpretation of the zoning ordinance, and the court said, no, you can't do that, you have to go to the zoning board of adjustment. It's not factually analogous to this at all. We're not here asking for you to interpret whether or not our use fits into a broad category of permitted uses under the ordinance, we're telling you, this is going to be a warehouse, that's all it's going to be, and a warehouse is permitted. That's it, end of story. So suffice to say, I disagree, the planning board should move forward, and we'd like to present our case. Thank you.
I'd like the opportunity to respond to that. So the, the case cited by counsel is not on point. What that case says, if you actually read it carefully, and you read DePetro in connection with that case, is that, yes, at one point, this planning board had jurisdiction, when it initially was submitted as a warehouse application. What DePetro stands for is, once a application, we're not theorizing this, we have actually, and maybe this has been lost upon, Mr. Cohen, we have actually filed an application before the zoning board of adjustment for interpretation. Once we do that, this board is divested of its authority and jurisdiction to hear it. So it's not a simple matter of, we've submitted it as a warehouse. Of course they have, right? Because that, that plays into their case. We would respectfully suggest it's a trucking terminal. But out of fairness, neither, neither we, nor the applicant, nor this board, under DePetro, which is on all fours here, Colznak versus, I will also submit you, Colznak versus the city of Colznak, also applies, okay? Those cases stand for the proposition that, yes, once this board initially had jurisdiction, it no longer retains jurisdiction when an application for interpretation has been made, it only makes sense, and it's only fair, it's a threshold determination, and our courts have recognized that that threshold determination cannot be made by the planning board, or according to what the applicant has characterized as. Because it is a, it's not, it's not my opinion, this is the law. There's a very different, there's a very different analysis there. I'm not simply opining on what I think it should be, certainly, I would prefer it to be a, a trucking terminal, but I'm not going that far here. I'm not saying, Mr. Chairman, this is a trucking terminal, to you, I respectfully am, but not to this board. I'll make that argument in the zoning board. Pending that determination, the case is clear, that the, that this body does not have the right to take that decision before. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the legal letter submitted by Mr. Dash and Mr. Clark, and the, we've heard the arguments of counsel. This is a legal issue, but the, some of these issues about what the use is, will be a future issue in this case at the planning board, even if we still proceed tonight and into the hearing on this, because such issues involve determinations, not interpretations, but determinations by the planning board of whether a use that's submitted complies with the township ordinances. Indeed, a site plan application is a hearing to determine whether the application conforms with the township ordinances. The applicant in this case asserted jurisdiction of the board at the last hearing as a warehouse. The board proceeded and found that the board had jurisdiction to hear the application for a warehouse. The objectors can make their own objections and express their own position regarding what type of use it is, and what facts are, and what, whether the use complies with the ordinance as a warehouse, but that's part of a hearing on a site plan application, and the board, the planning board, is the sole board that has jurisdiction over permitted uses. So, in this case, unlike DePetro, in this case warehouses are explicitly listed as a permitted use in the ED zone, and have been so listed probably for decades, perhaps four decades, and numerous tens of warehouses have actually been approved and built in the ED zone, throughout Sparta Township's ED zone. So this is not a new use, this is not a use that was not listed in the uses permitted in the ordinance, as was the case in Wayne Township, where the applicant was asking for a self-storage facility. Self-storage facility was not even listed in the business zone that the applicant was seeking approval in. So the, the distinguishing feature of these two cases is very clear, is clear as a matter of law. DePetro, the use was not listed as a permitted use. Diamond Chip, the use, warehouse, is listed as a permitted use. There is no doubt that that's what the ordinance says, it's black and white, it's black letter law, it's not up to me to recommend that to you, that's what that ordinance says, and that is very different than DePetro. I think that the board should just proceed with the application, the parties can go ahead and disagree all they want about what their positions are, and to the extent that relevant information is provided to this board about why this application does not conform to the ordinances, that is totally relevant in a proceeding like this on a site plan application. They can contest it all they want in this hearing. On the issue of a stay, the board has no authority to stay or stop an application. The municipal land use law sets up a procedure for starting a hearing and continuing a hearing, and sets up statutory time clock for the board to review and decide an application. That statutory time clock can be extended by permission from the applicant, but if it was not acted upon within the statutory time clock, a very draconian remedy takes place, which is an automatic approval that the applicant obtains because a board in New Jersey did not act within the time required by a statute. Very few governmental agencies are subject to such a strict time clock, but your board is, and every planning board, and every zoning board in New Jersey is so subject to that type of draconian time clock that results in an automatic approval, which is exactly what we don't want, in any case in which action is not taken by a board within the statutory timeframe. So in my opinion, there is no authority of the board to stay the application, the applicant has not agreed to postpone their application, and that being said, without any further argument, we should go forward, start hearing the remainder of this case, and proceed, as the chairman was saying, with giving an opportunity to the public to ask questions at nine o'clock.
This board does not have.
No further, no further comment, Mr. Dash, you are done.
This board has no further jurisdiction to get this application.
Don't agree, Mr. Dash, so you heard your decision.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, and again, I'm not an attorney, I want to make sure I'm, I'm clear, and that the rest of the community is clear. Mr. Dash, Mr. Clark, you're, you're, you presented a findings to the board that, at the end of the day, you disagree with the interpretation that this is a warehouse versus a trucking terminal, is that correct?
We're not, Mr. Chairman, we're not saying that it's an interpretation, what, what Mr. Dash is to make, making a point to you about is a specific phrase in the municipal land use law of a legal phrase called interpretation, under section B. I did not say that we interpreted the ordinance, I said to you that the board took jurisdiction over a warehouse application at its last meeting, actually, Mr. Dash was asked if he had any jurisdictional objections to that determination at that meeting, and he did not have any, and said, and he said that the notice is acceptable. So, that being said, we are done with this discussion, there is no authority of the board to stay an application that has started, that, there is no interpretation being made by the planning board, because planning boards don't make interpretations, but no interpretation is needed because the, the ordinance, unlike the DePetro case, explicitly lists warehouses as a permitted use in the ED zone. The debate that they might have about whether it's a trucking terminal and not a warehouse is a debate that they can have both in this forum and in other forums, and they could even try to assert in this forum that it is a trucking terminal, and present testimony to that effect. But the bottom line is, unlike DePetro, warehouses are specifically permitted in this zone, so an interpretation is technically not needed, and the board doesn't have to make an interpretation, the board just applies the current ordinances to the site plan application. There's nothing in the case law that prohibits that. There's nothing in the case law that prohibits that, and there's nothing in the case law that requires you to stay in application, and nothing in the case law allows you to stay in application. So we should proceed.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the question.
Mr. Dash, you should, you should now stop, because your argument is complete.
It's not, it's not, it's not. Mr. Chairman, it was a good question. I don't think it was answered properly here. We're not arguing that it's a trucking terminal here tonight. That's not why we're here. We're here tonight, sorry, we're here tonight, we're here tonight to make a point that Mr. Collins has said that this board does not have the jurisdiction to stay this application. And I want to assure you, please, I've been a citizen here and a member of the bar for 42 years. I'm not making an application here on passion. I've researched this et nauseam. You're not receiving the proper legal advice here respectfully, okay? The contention here is that this board doesn't have the jurisdiction. Forget about a stay. They can't even decide to stay without the jurisdiction in the first place. The, the, De Petro has been read to, it's in the, it's in the Cox treatises, that once an application has been filed, seeking an interpretation, the board, neither the board nor the applicant or the board's attorney gets to make that decision. The zoning board does. Alternatively, the court does. There's no prejudice to the applicant here. There's no prejudice to, to the board here. We're asking for accordance with the law and the interpretation of De Petro to, to, without jurisdiction, it's a nullity. Anything that we go on forward from here, and I want to make the record very clear, what's not, we're not arguing about semantics here tonight, whether it's a trucking terminal or whether it's not. Ultimately, we will make that argument, but nobody here in straight face, if it's not politically motivated, can say that this is not a legal argument that needs to be submitted to the zoning board of adjustment. Anything else suggests that there are other motives implied here, and I respectfully am not doing that. I'm not here to do that. I really want to keep this at a high level. And I've, I've researched this in quite detail. The case that Mr. Goine stands for does not stand for what we're arguing here today. As I've said, this board had jurisdiction, but De Petro was interpreted, and you can read it, and Mr. Collins is familiar with it. I'm disappointed he's not advising you of it, okay?
Mr. Dash, I did advise the board.
Don't interrupt me. Don't interrupt me. You've been talking to me before. Don't interrupt me now.
No. Mr. Dash?
Okay. Let me finish.
I'd like to keep this thing I've asked politely earlier.
Okay.
Keep this professional, cordial, and respectful.
I have not been disrespectful at all.
Yes, you were. Yes, you were, Mr. Dash.
Okay. I don't think so. And all I'm saying is that this is not a question of how we are interpreting this application tonight, because none of us have the authority to do so. Only the zoning board has the authority. If we, if we theoretically were going to say to you, Mr. Chairman, we intend to file an application, then I respect that this board has the right, and I would respect that. But we are not theoretical. We have actually taken the step to file the application. I want to make sure that's clear. We have actually filed that application before the zoning board. That divests this board of jurisdiction to hear this application, and therefore, the notion that Mr. Collins said that there is not the right to stay this application, well, there's not the right to act on this application because there's no jurisdiction. Please.
And I'll just add that what you're being asked to do is actually to make an interpretation. It's actually to make an interpretation. If you go forward tonight, you are effectively making an interpretation of whether this is a warehouse and a trucking terminal. And they want us to do exactly what the mistake they made in De Petro. What they want us to do is to continue to go forward and make arguments and ask for findings about whether this is a trucking terminal or a warehouse in front of the board that doesn't have jurisdiction to hear it. We can't make the same mistake as the plaintiffs did in De Petro. But that's what Mr. Collins wants us to do, and that's what the applicant wants us to do, and we can't do it.
So my, my understanding, based on the guidance from Mr. Collins, my understanding from the guidance from Mr. Collins is that this board does not have the authority to stay. I understand your arguments with regards to your interpretation for De Petro, and I respect that, and I think, you know, you putting forth an application for interpretation, you know, I commend you on a move to make sure that we are looking at this in the proper form, under the proper jurisdiction. I will say, I mean, if this board and under legal advice from the town attorney is that we do not have the jurisdiction to create a stay for this, and we've got an applicant that is willing to proceed, our biggest cost or loss here is time, effort, and money, should your argument be withheld. Is that correct?
Respectfully, thank you for thinking about this. I really appreciate that. But with the point, there's a finer distinction. The argument that this board doesn't have the stay, the ability to stay, doesn't have the jurisdiction, that presupposes that the board, that this board has jurisdiction to begin with tonight, in light of our pending application for objection on the question of interpretation. That application has divested this board of jurisdiction under the analysis of De Petro. That's a fine distinction, sir, that needs to be taken into consideration. The idea that this board cannot affect a stay is not true. It's incorrect legally. And moreover, I want to compress that the action taken here tonight is not subject to the arbitrary capricious and de novo standard, arbitrary capricious unreasonable standard, because this is a legal question of interpretation, and it would be plain error of this board to proceed further tonight without the jurisdiction. So I can appreciate if you didn't have the ability to stay, but you don't have the jurisdiction to begin with now that we have filed this application. And we have a right to go straight to the court, but we're not doing that out of respect and deference to the zoning board, to give them an opportunity, to give the applicant a fair opportunity to be heard at the zoning board. This is an absolute disrespect for the process that has been laid out by De Petro, and by the long line of, the analysis of where the board gets this jurisdiction goes to a question of interpretation. We're putting the cart before the horse by adopting the applicant's interpretation of the applicant as a warehouse. Yes, I don't disagree with Mr. Collins. Yes, when the application was submitted, sure, the board had jurisdiction. No question about that. That jurisdiction has not been lost when a question has been put into place formally before the zoning board by our application that now divests this board of any further jurisdiction. So whether you characterize it as a stay or as an adjournment, the applicant doesn't have a right to demand a decision on its hearing when this board doesn't have jurisdiction. It would be the same argument when we appear in federal court, the United States, which is based on the Constitution. Fundamental to a quasi-judicial body's right to make any decision before you get into whether you have a right to stay, whether it's a warehouse, whether it's not a warehouse, is whether the board has jurisdiction. The application for interpretation now divests this board of jurisdiction. It's a fundamental concept in law. I respectfully ask again, whether you call it an adjournment, a stay, or a continuance, this board does not have the right to proceed tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the case cited to you by Mr. Dash does not support Mr. Dash's position. De Petro actually was an appellate division case that actually affirmed the planning board determination that a self-storage facility that was not explicitly listed as a permitted use in the commercial zone was a permitted use, and that the board acted properly in approving the site plan approval for that use, even though self-storage was not explicitly permitted in the zone. As I have explained to you before, in the ED zone, warehouse is explicitly permitted. So the board has jurisdiction, as a planning board, to hear an application, there's no doubt about that actually, for a warehouse. And you probably should proceed tonight, and you've offered the opportunity to use the last hour for questions from the public, so I'd recommend that we proceed, and there should be no further comment from attorneys.
All right.
Well, that's not consistent with our, that's not consistent with our process. We may direct.
It is consistent, Mr. Dash.
Mr. Dash, I appreciate your comments. I appreciate your testimony and you putting forth your comments. I want to thank you guys. I think, you know, at this point, based on legal advice, I'd like to move forward with the application. I encourage you to continue to have those discussions with the zoning department and, you know, with, you know, with the attorneys to determine whether or not, you know, again, the interpretation of where jurisdiction lies. As Mr. Collins has pointed out, you know, this was presented to us as a warehouse, which is a permitted use within this economic development zone. So I want to be clear on that. I mean, that's how this was presented to the board. So I want to give the applicant an opportunity to at least talk through and discuss why, and the fundamentals of their application as it sits before this board.
Sure. And just let the record reflect that by allowing this to continue, we are not waiving our jurisdictional arguments, nor arguments that any testimony taken subsequent to the filing of our application is null and void, and shall have no effect.
We reserve the right to, with all respect and respect, to file a direct.
Thank you. So with that, Mr. Collins, I believe next up is Mr. Ford. We left off with you during our last meeting. I'd like to swear.
He's still, Mr. Ford is still under oath, and Mr. Ford will try to answer the questions as much as he can from the question posted on the website from the Q and A from the last meeting of March 3rd. Please go ahead, gentlemen.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, so what we wanted to do tonight, we also have, sorry, we also have our traffic engineer here. Actually, we have our whole team here, and what we hope to do during the public comment portion was answer questions from anybody in the public that has questions of everybody who's testified so far. We do have all those professionals available. We actually brought a few more professionals in case there are targeted questions we need them to answer. But what we did after the first hearing was we took a look at the questions that the planning board received from the public, and those were distilled down for us by board staff. So we do have a list of questions, and it was promised that we would go through these questions with Mr. Ford and answer them. My hope is that a lot of the questions that we would otherwise get during the public comment period would be answered at this portion of the hearing. Somehow, I suspect that might not be the case, but we are going to do our best to address the public's questions. So, Mr. Ford, you're still under oath, and why don't we just start running through these one by one together, okay? So the first question is, since non-residential, does this project fall under a pilot which is a payment in lieu of taxes?
No.
And the reason for that, just so everybody is familiar, this is not a redevelopment project with a capital R. This is not a redevelopment area. There's no payment in lieu of taxes, no financial agreement with the municipality, nothing like that. This is strictly an application for use that is permitted in the ED zone, and so there is no financial arrangement, payment in lieu of taxes, long-term abasement, anything like that. Number two, what is the difference in truck traffic coming and going now with the current use compared to the proposed use for Route 15 and local roads?
Mr. Goine, may I make a recommendation?
Sure.
So instead of going line by line for each of these, because I know there's 72-plus questions, is it okay, because a lot of the questions are centered around the traffic component and the environmental, would you be okay if we, I guess, started with traffic? Because I do want to make sure that we get to the traffic testimony?
Yeah, I think, I think we'll be through this shorter than you think. Most of the traffic questions, we're just going to defer to our traffic engineer.
Okay.
Environmental will defer. So for the questions that Mr. Ford can answer.
Correct.
I just want to let everybody know that if this is a traffic question, we're going to punt it to our staff.
Perfect. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Ford, excuse me. Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Just turn around and grab the mic and take it close to you. It'll come out of the stand or bring the stand around.
I've got it.
Just so that your testimony is picked up on the record. Thank you.
Certainly.
No.
You got it.
He's got this one.
Yeah, there's one there.
No, I thought he could use that.
I got it.
Okay, so number two, what is the difference in truck traffic coming and going now with the current use compared to the proposed use for Route 15 and local roads?
It will be a minimum impact, and our traffic engineer
(laughter) I live there. Have you lived here?
Compared to the existing operation and what we are proposing, it will be a minimum impact of truck traffic, and our traffic engineer, our traffic engineer will be sworn in for testimony to model that under the DOT standards.
Number three, does boxcar loading refer to the actual train loading and unloading area?
Boxcars are one form of equipment that are used in rail operations for movement of goods. So if you're referring to that type of equipment, being a boxcar, as to loading and unloading, yes.
Where will the trains travel to and from?
The New York Siskiyou and Western, the NYSNW railroad, which is the operating railroad here in town, has a yard called Sparta Junction, which is over by the propane operation, and that's where they switch at night cars in and out from.
The next question, Jim, pertains to traffic, and we'll probably kick this over to Adam Gibson, but the next question is, how many additional?
Mr. Ford, while you're on that, why don't you, I'm sorry, why don't you just explain where the rail line runs from and to, the New York Siskiyou and Western rail line?
Well, the New York Siskiyou and Western is a short line of railroad. It's not a Class 1 large railroad like the CSX in the north, or southern here in the northeast. So the NYSNW runs basically from some, south of the ports in New Jersey, up into New York as far as Syracuse. But the actual rail line that, as you know, runs under, adjacent to our site, under 15, there's no crossing there. There is a crossing, grade crossing, as we all know, farther south on 15 of the intersection at House's Corner, 15 there. But then the rail line runs across Demarest and over to the propane sugar terminal and nitrous gases facility that is over there, and there is a actual rail yard there that stores those cars that come in via other locations into the NYSNW yard there to serve what we call local jobs or local industry, which has existed for years.
Number, I'm going to skip over a few that have to do with traffic, and we're going to handle those with Adam Gibson. So number five has to do with traffic. Number six is, how many additional train cars are expected to come through and at what hours?
Our facility that we've, a warehouse facility we designed here allows for 16 unloading spots for rail cars, or boxcars, as some people in the audience might call them as well. It just depends on the type of product that is moved, which is, in our case, what we're marketing towards is consumer goods, as I've said before, and packaging, those things that we would consume on a regular basis, just like the word warehouse explains or is written. It's the housing of wares, and wares would be consumer goods in nature. So there are 16 spots at a unloading facility location dock outside of the warehouse. So the answer really is 16 spots that we can unload or load at any time.
But what hours will those trains be operating?
The NYSNW railroad operates and does their local switching for this industry, for the propane that exists right now, for the sugar terminal, for any operation, the switching they do to industry locations like this, and they presently do it on my partner's properties at Sparta Ready Mix, are between the hours of 5:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m.
How much noise will be generated, and has there been any, has that been given any attention or study?
There is a very written and clear, it's been for a long time, a noise ordinance in the township here, and any tenants or any use at this facility would have to meet all of those noise standards that already exist.
This is, this is a loaded question. What is the proposed use of the warehouse?
To store consumer goods or packaging, as I've said before in past testimony.
What type of products will be shipped to and from the warehouse?
Same thing. Anything consumer goods, food, anything durables, anything packaging that we consume on a daily basis as consumers.
How much will the use increase the burdens on township for water and other police and fire-related work? How much tax revenue will be paid to Sparta Township?
I mean, I think the, both the fire department and the police department have signed off on our preliminary plan in all forms and fashions. Number one. Number two is that, what was the second part of that question?
Tax revenue.
Tax revenue is probably going to be in the range of $1.50 per square foot, so if you times that by 881,000 square feet, that would be the ratable minimum that we expect within Sussex County from history of other type of warehouses just like ours.
So approximately 1.5, 1.6 million per year?
Could be a little bit less, could be a little bit more, yes. That's up to the tax assessor.
And just to point out to Mr. Ford's point, we did get handed letters, actually, right before we walked in. One's dated March 21st, 2022, from the Sparta Township Fire Official. One is dated April 5th, 2022, and that is from the Sparta Township Police Department. Both of those letters basically conclude that they have no issues or concerns with the above project, as the Fire Prevention Bureau stated, and as the Township Police Department stated, based on the traffic study that we submitted, they don't foresee any traffic-related issues with the proposed project at 33 Demarest Road.
Jackson's speculating. There's no evidence of, no conclusion, no evidence.
I'm just, I'm just reading what the fire, what the fire and the police department.
We'll address those in the We'll address those in the component, and we'll ask.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just reading what the letter stated. Number 16, will the tenants be restricted from sending their trucks to exit 15, I'm sorry, will we send their trucks to exit Route 15 earlier on 517?
No.
Will a private fuel station be needed?
No.
18 deals with traffic, which Adam will handle, 19 deals with property tax impact, which we already addressed, 20 deals of the expected increase in rail traffic. Jim, you can answer that.
And once again, as I stated, that our facility, the maximum amount of boxcars, railcars, any type of rail equipment that can be unloaded or loaded at any given time is 16 car spots.
And the idea is that the rail currently serves the existing use, correct?
That is correct.
Right. So the idea, the testimony would be that the expected increase in rail traffic is essentially none because the rail is already operating?
It's operating presently, and it's been for years.
Does the main rail line cross Route 15, where Route 15 goes from dual-lane highway to single lane?
I'm not sure exactly what the intent or the person who asked that question, exactly what they meant by single to dual lane. But as we all know, as we all know, the main rail line for the NYSNW at our site, adjacent to our site, or that was serviced our site period, goes under Route 15.
No, it does not.
Yes, it does.
So there are additional crossings?
No, I said it earlier, Chairman, I said it earlier in my testimony, there are other crossings, absolutely. On Limecrest, on 15, farther to the south, but the line that's adjacent to our property, as it affects 15, goes under 15, and it's not even adjacent to our property. Okay?
Well, we can, we'll reserve, we'll reserve whether or not it goes over or under. For Adam, when you come up, we'll answer that question, okay?
This is incredible testimony. Who wants to question it?
If the train is on the tracks, will there still be access to the buildings from Emergency Road?
Yes.
What is the distance of the property from Route 15?
The actual distance from our property, Route 15, is 1,600 feet in a direct line.
Next question is really an environmental question, Jim, so I'm going to defer that to Mike Green, who will come up later, or Pat Lyman, our environmental consultant. Adam, you're going to deal with question 25, which deals with traffic. Looking at the traffic study, is there any indication listed of the additional train cars to the site, frequency, times, storage, and effects on surrounding sites? So basically the question is, what is the effect on train cars going to be on traffic?
None.
Train car deliveries?
It's the same as existing right now.
Well, is the idea that the warehouse is going to be served by rail going to have, in your opinion, a positive or negative impact on traffic from the site?
Less trucks. At the four-to-one conversion ratio, you can fit four truck-trailer products, cubic amount of product, into one railcar.
Is there an artist, we've already, the question is, is there an artist rendering, which obviously we submitted at the last hearing, it's actually page A002 in the architectural plans, which were all marked as A3 at the last hearing, and that's what we have up in front of everybody now. How will the vehicle emissions affect people living in the area?
Emissions is a standard that the government sets forth. So whatever trucks, whatever autos, whatever rail locomotives need to meet those standards, that's not our determination.
And those will be federal, state, whoever regulates those vehicle emissions, all the trucks would have to meet whatever regulations apply.
Absolutely, yes.
How it'll affect the environment and wildlife, which is really a question for our environmental expert, and we will get to that later in the presentation. Next question relates to noise, which Mr. Ford already talked about. All our tenants would have to comply with whatever the noise ordinance in town and any relevant state standards. Mr. Gibson is going to talk about the anticipated traffic pattern, which is number 31. Adam is going to talk about number 32, which is testimony on the traffic study. Next question, how many tractor-trailers per day will drive through Sparta daily, considering there are 190 loading docks? And that's more of an operational question, Jim. Obviously, Adam will talk to traffic impacts. But operationally, how is this going to work?
Just because there's 190 doors doesn't mean that there's 190 trucks moving in and out every day. It's a warehouse, it's a dwell facility, which means that it's a, you know, facility where consumer goods come in or packaging comes in, and it could sit there for three months, six months. I have warehouses that sit there for a year. It's when the demand on, from the consumer or the stores, the retailers, need that product that goes out. This whole, the whole operation of the warehouse is orchestrated, it's like a ballet. There's not free rein to come in and out whenever you want. Trucks have to get appointments, scheduled, just like the train service. It's all scheduled, and it's not a free-for-all. It's completely, you know, a completely scheduled operation, 100% that is presented to this board and to the city before any occupancy of the building.
Mr. Ford, do you operate other warehouses of this size and magnitude?
I, my 30-year career, I grew up in a transportation family, grew up in a trucking family, rubbery family.
So, understanding that.
It's been over 30 years.
Understanding we don't know what the tenants are today.
Yes.
So it's very, and I know it's difficult to determine whether or not we know what those tenants are going to be, but based on history or based on similar operations of this size and scope, what is the number of trucks that you would expect for this sort of operation?
Sure, can I just add something to your question? Because the way I understand our ordinance is the only thing that would be allowed, as far as a warehouse goes, would be not a retail warehouse, but a wholesale warehouse.
Facility to facility.
That's right. There's no, another question coming up here is retail component. There is no retail component to this.
So this is not an Amazon warehouse, where they can ship directly to?
Absolutely, no.
A retailer, or, I'm sorry, a household?
No.
Okay. So I guess back to my original question then. I mean, your, the ability, and I think from a community perspective, obviously, one of the larger impacts for us is the traffic component.
Correct.
And how many trucks is this going to bring in, and what sort of impact is that going to have? So again, understanding that we don't know what the tenants are going to be, this is a multi-step process, and this is phase one of just figuring out getting preliminary site plan approval, and then final site plan approval, and then ultimately any tenants that come in have to get approved. But based on, I guess, your 30 years of experience of what we've seen, do you have some sort of an estimate, or based on similar size, scope facilities, what would you anticipate in terms of trucking volume?
Any answer I'd give right now, based on my history, based on other warehouses that I've had, I do, I just built a warehouse similar in size to this in another part of the country, okay, another major metropolitan area, okay, that has less than 20 trucks that come in and out a day. But, and we do have over 100 doors on that building, okay? The reason why they need the doors is because of the fact that they stage those trailers there, whether they're empty or whether they're full. It takes a operator, forecourt operator and the warehouse staff, you know, over four hours to load or unload a trailer. Because of that, that's why they have those empty doors for staging. It's a staging area, is what it is, to take, you know, to fill or to empty. But if the simple, simple fact of common knowledge is that, you know, we are requesting 191 doors, that would be the spots that are available, including the additional 50 of trailer parking. So the maximum capacity of trailers that could ever be on the site at one time is 241.
Okay, so 241, but not an understanding of when that traffic may move?
That could be turned over a number of different times.
Right.
So then carrying that statement, how you're, I guess we'll get into the traffic study.
Yes.
Since you can't give an order, magnitude, or a range, what is the traffic study going to use as some of the assumptions?
What we had to do, and I will let Adam, as an expert witness, you know, testify that, but we have to use by NJDOT standards and federal standards, what's known as the Institute of Traffic Engineers' recommendations. It's for this size facility, and it's in a worst-case scenario, it's a national standard. It's what I would call metric. It's a national standard, and I would rather, Adam, who's the expert engineer, who did the report, who wrote it, explain that in detail.
We'll defer this to traffic study.
Mr. Chairman, one clarification, the 191 doors is the actual amount of doors. The number 241 that you gave includes the 50 spaces for spotting empty trailers.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, look, understanding we'll get into more detail during the traffic.
Correct. So back to, back to the list of questions, 35 deals with the traffic as well, 36 deals with traffic. Question 37, is this project already approved? No.
No.
It's not. How will increase in trucking affect residences in the area? That's really a question for Mr. Gibson. There's a question regarding the retaining wall, which maybe, maybe when we get to the public comment, that's really a question for our civil engineers. Maybe we get to the public comment, and we open up everybody, we'll have him answer that.
Yeah, I'd recommend similarly for 40.
And similarly for 40, and 41. Those are all questions regarding the retaining walls. 42 is, will any trucks be spending the night with cabs in sleeping quarters?
Absolutely not. No.
No, and frankly, that, if the board elects, that could be a condition of any approval here.
I would gladly make that condition if you told me to.
What is the propose, we did talk about 43. The question was, what is the proposed roofing material, TPO or EPDM? Our architect testified to that at the previous hearing, what the roof was going to be made of. 44.
Yeah, can you just restate, Richard, if it was TPO or EPDM?
I guess the answer is it could be either one. It could be either one.
So do you have one you're leaning towards, or?
Well, it sounds like whoever did ask the question is of the opinion that TPO is a better solution for this. I would gladly use TPO. It's not a cost factor, it's more an opinion. In a colder climate like this, there's different, you know, different opinions on longevity, life expectancy of those two types of materials. It's hard to get either one right now in the supply chain world we're living in, but TPO would be fine.
Thank you.
Number 44, are you aware that across this development, there is a big hazmat/propane/naturalgas storage facility?
Yes, I mentioned that earlier in my discussion testimony.
45, would this facility increase rail traffic resulting in additional crossings on Route 15 and Main Street in Sparta coming up to Route 517?
Additional? No, because that, those trains that are switched in are switching from points beyond, brought to the Sparta Junction Yard, and as I said, our warehouse building would be serving what we call local job, and that's from 5:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., where the NYSNW switches cars in and out of our property.
Mr. Ford, has there been any sort of a, I guess, a train impact study? I know we've got the traffic study, we've got the environmental study. Is it, is it normal to conduct a train-based study when we're going, when we're looking at rail-based operations like this?
No, it's not.
Other than the ratio you referenced before?
Yes.
Just to clarify, was that 60 or 16 cars, boxcars?
There's 16, 1/6.
1/6.
Unloading spots.
Thank you.
Proposed on our property.
Just to clarify, you might see an increase in cars on a particular rail to serve your warehouse, but it wouldn't require an extra train. Is that, is that why you're saying you don't expect an increase in rail?
That is correct. So maybe elaborate on that a little bit, is that the way a railroad operates, in this case, the NYSNW, they have a what we call manifest train. A manifest train is what we all, as individuals, see as a long train that's going to cross the tracks, that kind of stuff, right? That might, there's so many different types of rail operations, but that typically is composed of hundreds of railcars, correct? And those are the freight trains that frustrate us every day going to work. The gates are down, the signals are on, and the intersection is blocked. Our operation, our warehouse, is not remotely that. It is a minimal amount of cars that can be handled daily. I use the word daily, but meaning in a day's time, switched at night, as I said, from 5:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. So whatever cars, at a maximum of 16, could be pulled out the empties and put in live loads, or, you know, filled loads, is the absolute maximum that, you know, is proposed in this existing operation. And that's switched from the Sparta Junction Yard, which is adjacent to the propane operation, is those who live here, no. It is not a long, you know, 200-car train that's being switched out of our property. There's not the length of track that comes in and out of our property. And once again, as I call it, that's what's known as a local job. When the big train comes in from elsewhere, from anywhere else that the NYSNW is receiving that train, whether it's south, whether it's north, whether it's, you know, Syracuse, wherever that longer train's coming in, they switch it into the yard, they break it down into smaller components. Some go to the propane company, some go to, you know, other operations here locally that exist of industry, and a couple of those cars, or some of those cars, come to us. One day, it might be four cars, and it could be, it could be a maximum of 16 cars at one time.
Can I ask a quick question?
You sure can.
So currently, do either of the businesses that are on this site accept rail?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so what is the number of railcars ballpark? So in addition, in comparison to this?
Councilman, it varies. It truly varies depending on the operation. I mean, as you know, my partners in the ready-mix business and the sand and gravel business have been there for years, and their use has been permitted for years. They worked for many years with the railroad, trying to use this as more of a transfer facility for, as you can see, their sand, their gravel, their operations of building materials and supplies that are formed and transferred to that, to the local area, for home building, for retail, for any type of development that may be going on. And that varies at times. It's a supply-and-demand question is what it really is.
So I'm just, yeah, I'm looking at this to say, so there's a lot of questions.
Sure.
Is this going to increase the cars, right? The questions keep coming up. So what I'm recommending is maybe you can provide us with, go back, look at your data, look at the scheduling, whatever, and just give us an average, so that we know what we're talking about.
Sure.
What are we talking about now versus what are we talking about, you know, projected into the future?
Sure.
I would recommend that that be given to the board.
Absolutely.
Okay?
We could agree to that.
Just a couple to that. The assumptions need to be defined. At least, they can't be so broad that it doesn't answer the questions, or it leaves more uncertainty than certainty when you're either referring to the rail or in order of traffic we're going to hear upcoming here. But the assumption should be very clearly defined.
Fair enough. We understand, and we agree. So we will provide that.
Can I just have one question?
Sure.
You mentioned before, I think, that it would take four hours to load or unload an 18-rail car. How long would it take to load or unload a single boxcar?
That's at least double the time.
Thank you.
And if I could ask one question as well, please?
Sure.
In regards to the traffic, I understand that you have a maximum of 16 cars that you can fit there, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, you could have 16 or less, depending on the load that's coming in. I think when we get that additional information, what would be helpful is to understand not just the additional cars that may be right now put onto current trains that have less than 16, but I think to the councilman's question before, you know, are there additional engines bringing in additional loads? I think there's a distinction there, right? Are you bringing more frequency of trains in with engines pulling in up to 16 boxcars? Or is it just a question of making sure, or whatever the need might be of the warehouse, that there's up to 16 boxcars that can come in, and the traffic won't change? I think we need to understand that distinction.
No, understood. And that's what we're going to provide. So that, we understand.
And we can cover all of this more?
Yes.
Obviously, in the testimony?
Absolutely.
So let's keep going with the questions.
Yep, sure. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to try to skip over the train questions for now, because I think it'd be more beneficial if we provided that information. All right, so, 47, will there be storefronts? Will there be retail stores in the building?
No.
Will this be a last-mile warehouse? If it is, wouldn't that increase traffic? We don't have to answer the second part, because the answer is no, correct?
No.
Are restaurants proposed for the site?
No.
What kind of traffic is going to be added through Route 15, which is a question that Adam will get into? If warehouse and some sort of shipping, will you have lots of traffic? That's Adam's question. Why does it have to be 50 feet high, which is number 52?
Because it's a dwell warehouse. It is not a truck terminal, it is not a transfer operation. When products come in, as I said, consumer goods, it could be bottled water, it could be boxes, it could be anything that we need in our daily lives for consumption. It's a dwell facility. We either rack that building, or we call it ground stack, and so it's palletized. The reason for the clear height is designed in the warehouse building at 40 feet clear on the inside is for long-term dwell. It doesn't go in one side and come out the other, it needs to stay there. That's why the size of the warehouses and the attention of the dwell time in the warehouse.
Just so we're clear on that, Jim, can you just, just for a little bit, explain why a dwell warehouse, to the extent that it wasn't clear, explain why a dwell warehouse needs to be 50 feet high, whereas a trucking terminal might be something less?
Because it doesn't go in one door and out the other. Because it doesn't go in one door and out the other. By design alone, by design alone of these facilities, it is not a cross-duck terminal, it is not a transfer terminal, it is not a truck terminal, it is a warehouse. It houses wares. And it sits there, dwells for months upon time. And literally, I mean, I have, I have a tenant that makes glass bottles. Kid you not walked in their warehouse recently and there's dust on the bottles because it's, they've been sitting there for over a year. Their customer, the consumer, has not had a need for that type of bottle and that type of product to be shipped out, to be filled and used. It's there available for, for when needed.
Mr. Chairman, just to add on to that, there's a certain distance that you, from the top of your top rack to the sprinkler system.
That is correct.
And it used to be four feet. I don't know what it is to our code. Is it, because you're having a difference of 40 feet versus 50 for the building height?
That's, yeah, that's what the code requires. So, so it is, it is-
It will be within code.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Will there be a security team on site or will you rely on township police?
These type of warehouse operations typically would have either a manager or a security person at site, whether they're checking trucks in and out at the gate facility, whether they're there literally just to secure it at night. Some companies elect to have full-time security yards even at night when they're not operating. But yeah, if there was a 911 call, of course, we're going to call, I would assume that the operator would, or the user in the building would call the township police.
What are, well, next question is, what are the intended use and operational details, which is what we're going through now? Question 55 is more a question for the township, which is, does the township have a fire truck which can go up 50 feet? I mentioned before, we did get a letter from the Fire Prevention Bureau that said, and I quote, "The Fire Prevention Bureau has no issues or concerns with the above project as presented." But I'll defer to the township on that. 56, based on the amount of trucks coming in, and we talked about onsite fuel station, there is not one?
No.
We talked about whether it's going to be a warehouse or a distribution center. The next question, I'm not exactly sure how, well, Jim, you can answer this the best you can. How is the facility going to manage all the transient individuals that will be passing through as factory workers, truckers, and rail workers for the safety and that of our children traffic? That's the question.
Well, I mean, the warehouse, when it, when it's open, if it is open, would look towards a local labor pool. So there's no transients of a form or fashion. The truckers, the truckers are coming from other locations and they're bringing a live load or an empty load and leaving upon switching their load. In the railroad, the NYSNW, there's only two people on a crew, on their nightly crew, two people that switch all the industry around here. So there's two people that are local residents here that work for the railroad that switch the cars in and out. That's it.
Are the, are the truckers all independent, operating as independents, or that's going to be determined upon the tenant?
It's determined by the tenant, but another one of the major shortages, as we know in the country, is our truck drivers.
CDN.
And not, cannot only pass the CDN, that kind of stuff. So you're seeing a consolidation of many that could be independent, but I think a lot of the type of users that we look for this warehouse would rely on larger corporations to manage their freight. So you would see larger corporations in the form of truck drivers that would service this facility.
And Mr. Ford, your expectation, I think, based on the last testimony, was employment, again, not knowing what the tenants are yet. So I know it's kind of putting the cart before the horse, but somewhere in the neighborhood between 100 and 400, is that correct or?
Jim, why don't we, that's a fair question, Mr. Chairman. Why don't we clarify that, Jim? Because I think that was a big point of confusion during the first hearing. So let's explain what's going on with respect to our employment number.
We are approved presently, you know, for up to 100 employees from our sanitary capabilities, We would need to add capacity to the sanitary system and pay for that ourselves in order to have more employees at the warehouse. As I stated earlier, Mr. Chairman, I have warehouses that are bigger than this who have minimal employees and it's a matter of flushing toilets or having lunch or water, whatever it might be, to, to use in general. But there are warehouses like this that could very well have, you know, 100 to 400 employees. But that amount of employees, that amount of hiring and stuff, those things are all in a next process that comes through the city in approval of a business license that need to be approved for anybody to operate at those capacities. So once again, I would be guessing 100% from my 30-year history of what it could be, could be minimal. And as I heard you, Councilwoman, Quinn, say is that, I'm not here to give, you know, guest myths or whatever it might be, we're here to give facts, so.
Again, back to my assumptions, that's 100 to 400. Well, is those numbers going to be factored into your traffic study outside of just the use of the terminal?
That's the point, and thank you, Mr. Sylvester. So that's the point that I wanted to clarify. So the, I don't know if we did a great job of explaining that at the first hearing. Right now, we have an approval for the onsite wastewater treatment facility for up to 100 employees. That's the maximum that we can go. So for all intents and purposes, for this present application, the maximum that we would have for this facility is 100 employees. If we wanted to go anything over 100 employees, we would need to get a water quality management plan amendment. We would need to get additional approvals to have a larger onsite treatment facility. We don't have that yet. So that's something-
You did file, correct?
Correct. We have, we have applications pending for those, but again, you know, there's no guarantee that we get those approvals, there's no guarantee when we get those approvals. And frankly, it's not even something like, you know, NJDEP freshwater wetlands or flood hazard area or Sussex County Planning Board or Soil Conservation District, all of which are going to be conditions of any approval that this board grants. That's not necessarily a condition of an approval that this board grants, that's just something that this applicant would have to do over and above in order to get additional capacity for its onsite wastewater treatment, to have more employees. It's not a guarantee. So I think we gave that range at the, at the first hearing, but right now, before this board, we're presenting an application with a 2,000 gallon per day, am I getting that right? 2,000 gallon per day system?
Yes.
That's approved, and that's all we have. If that changes, frankly, if the applicant were to, in the future, get approval for a larger onsite wastewater treatment facility, we'd have to come back for amended site plan approval to this board.
Correct.
And, and the board would have an opportunity to continue to, to address the additional employees that that would cause and all the additional factors. So I just want to make that clear for record because I do think we needed to, to make that straight.
Mr. Goen, while we're on this, could you just take a look at your septic permit and just, let's go back to this 100 person and just check, take a look at it. It seems to say 80 employees with some guests, 150 guests, I assume, visitors. So is that the correct maximum under the current septic permit? It's a-
Yes, which, which-
Which is the, what the current, right?
Right. So when they say visitors, it could be visitors facility, but just as much that that would also be there to service, you know, a driver came in, had to use a restroom before they left out right away.
Right, that would be the visitors, a number of users, visitors. So to the extent you made a general statement of 100 employees, is that more likely to be limited to 80 per this septic permit?
Yeah, that's probably right. And when I said 100, that, that was intending that it would be some combination of, you know, permanent onsite employees and some number of visitors that would be using that allocation.
Okay.
I suppose it could be up to 150 visitors. We wouldn't anticipate that many visitors at any one time. So-
But, but the point is you'll comply with this septic permit and you'll-
Correct.
Act accordingly, okay.
Correct. Thank you. We're almost, we're almost through these. I think we can get through these last few quickly and then we have traffic. So Jim, the question is basically, was there a market needs analysis done for this project? You know, why here?
Yes, there's, our spending habits change on a regular basis. And, and because of that, the market analysis shows that, yes, in the consumer good space, things that we consume daily, there's a need for this type of operation to warehouse product that can be distributed to the future in any form or fashion to other suppliers. You know, every industry has different ways of distribution. The beverage industry is an example, you know, alcohol-related products comes from a specific building for that. This warehouse could very well feed that distribution facility. So yes, there's been a market analysis and the demand for this type of warehouse numerating, numeration-wise, number-wise is well beyond this for the region.
Was that shared with township or in the packet?
Our market analysis? No, we have not submitted that. If you can only unload 12 trucks at a time and don't want drivers waiting the four hours while other trucks are unloaded, roughly 178 doors will be unused, is that correct? We've gone through that a little bit, Jim, but why don't you just elaborate?
I'm not quite sure what that question means, to be honest.
Well, essentially, if, essentially, the unloading operation could look something like this rendering, correct? Where some of the doors are unused, some of the doors are used.
That's correct.
And the reason that some of the doors would be unused is that those would be used for future staging areas for goods that have not been unloaded, or they would be used for areas for goods that have already been unloaded, correct?
That is correct.
Excuse me, can I just give clarification on that? So if, when an 18-wheeler pulls in, will the, will the cab wait while the truck, while the trailer is loaded and unloaded, or rather unloaded and loaded, or does the cab pick up a different trailer and then leave right away?
The typical, the typical process, and I say typical because this is my 30-years' experience, trucker comes in with a live load, backs it up to the door they've been told to back it up to, and that door that they're backing up to is where it's going to be positioned in the warehouse. Because even when the forklift operator comes in and he's unloading that trailer, they don't want that, every time you touch it, it costs money. It's hours of operations, labor costs, it's all those kind of things, equipment costs, you know, our electric, electric forklifts that we mandate in the buildings, electric, by the way, the forklifts, you know, you don't want them running down to the end of the building. So they're told ahead of time, their appointment is told, which door to line up with and which to drop, drop that load. Once they disconnect, they're typically pulling an empty trailer, hooking an empty trailer and bringing it outbound. It's what we call a closed-loop system. So once again, on the trucking side of this operation, the absolute maximum, as I said multiple times, is 241 spots. That's the absolute max in a closed-loop system that you could ever support. And you need a balance between the live, you know, the live loads and the empties. And that's the reason why you have multiple doors, is because one of those trailers, whether it's empty or full, or that trailer may be reloaded as quick as it's unloaded, is at a given door in a given spot for that reason. I've also stated in the past and sticking with this 100%, until a tenant is identified and shared with this, this board and shared with the city for any kind of an approval, I do not tend through the construction process of building but half of the 191 door spots. So 90-some, 95 spots, doors, actual doors, is what I believe. Even less than that, in my opinion, of 30 years, would never be needed for this facility.
So what would be the dwell time of a cab in the facility? Like when he comes on?
Less than an hour. By the, by the time they back up their live load, unload the door, or, you know, roll the door open, we don't have what we call like lumpers, that doesn't exist here, this is a pure warehouse operation. So there's, they don't have additional help. You know, finding these type of employees sometimes is difficult too. So they, they need to use and utilize their labor in an analysis. That's why a lot of, a lot of major corporations that make consumer goods actually outsource this in the form of what we call 3PL business, third-party logistics firm, or 4PL. And they outsource that. And those companies are more efficient in cost operations from equipment, from, from the forklifts, from operations, from software, from tracking, from, from billing, from all that kind of stuff, as well as the amount of labor that they have in the warehouse. They don't want even one more employee in the warehouse than they have to have because it costs money.
While we're on the topic of the facility itself, may I ask two questions?
Please.
Okay. So two things, and we didn't have the, I didn't have this information when you were-
Can you speak up, please?
So I didn't have this information the first time that you came, we were waiting for the report. I've done some research since then and in your history, in your other warehouses, do these trailers, do the back ends of the trucks, are they stacked against the building itself or are they stacked, in other words, are they stacked off the building or are they stacked to the building?
When the live load comes in, Councilman?
I'm not talking about a truck comes in and a truck is leaving that day. I'm talking about trailers pulled up to the side of the building. Do you have trailers that are parked in front of these bays for longer than it is just a turnaround? So could-
Yes, yes, there's a, it's, the trailers dwell as well. So when I refer to this closed-loop system, the trailer's empty as well.
Okay.
May be needed for a future load, but the maximum you can have at any, any point is 241.
But what I'm saying is, so those trailers-
Yes.
Are all stacked? And I'm asking you, they're stacked to the building or they're stacked in parking spots or whatever and then brought to the doors? And the reason why I'm asking this is because in doing some research, some safety research, you know, when you leave the trailers up to the building, that just creates more space if there is a fire, God forbid, for, for fire officials to get to the building because they have to hurdle all these trucks. So what I'm saying is, what is your proposal? Are you proposing to leave, you know, is this how you run your operation, like where the trailers stay to the building and they're stacked up? Or do they, are the trailers there on site but not to the doors?
Well, they're not stacked up. I mean, they would be backed up for a door.
Yeah, I think the question is, are those full spots going to be taken up by a tractor-trailer that's going to effectively extend the length it would take a firefighter or fire department to get to in case there were fire? Meaning, are they going to stay there or, to your point, they're transient? And understanding you've got dedicated parking spots for, I think it was 50 some odd spots for-
For empties.
Dedicated parking.
For empties, right.
191. Does the facility or is the proposal to allow those 191 at time of, that they're not in use for trucks to sit in front of that spot?
They're, they're available for that, but if you look at the rendering here, this is what I envision in years of doing this, what the operation would look like, never being full. It is not a, not a facility that's there to store trailers, empty or full, because that equipment's not making money. So the reality is that the trucking firm or the 3PL or the owner-
Okay.
Procter &amp; Gamble, I've used it as an example before, they don't want the trailer sitting there, they want it out in the street being-
But you have, I'm saying, you have spaces on site-
Yes.
To put these trailers.
Correct.
So what I'm saying is, is that where they go? Like if they're not being utilized?
Yes.
They're there.
They have to be in a spot.
Okay, so they're not to the building?
The building can be in certain spots, Councilwoman.
So I think that we just need-
You gotta assume, based on what you're hearing, that those, all those bays can potentially have a trailer.
Okay, so I'm just going to bring to the board that for future consideration, I think from a safety perspective, we need to just be mindful of that, that they're, you know, that we need to take that into consideration, okay? Because it's a big distance that the trucks have to be away, and if they can't have any brake in the spaces and everything is trailers and something happens, so I'm just throwing it out there right now.
Yeah, Chris, I think when I brought up the fact that there were 50 additional spots to drop an empty or a full trailer, that when the fire department looked at this, they could probably assume that every single door, 191, might have a trailer in front of it plus the 50 extra to drop. So I'm sure if that was a problem for the fire department, they would have notified us.
Well, I'm bringing it up because I think, I want to make sure that we are taking every precaution when we're looking at this application.
Sure.
The other thing is, I think we need to just double-check what the flow to the site is too. So, I don't know if you've had a chance to check with Phil Spaldy what the actual flow to the site is, but I think you need to just double-check that as well. God forbid there's a fire or something there, let's figure out what the flow is to make sure that it can handle. I'm not saying on the trucks.
Right.
I'm saying I want to make sure that we have the flow.
No, and Council, we, we are far from designing that there's a fire.
I understand, I'm just putting this out there right now.
Oh, no, I hear you, I'm clear, yeah.
Because I want it on the record and I, I don't want time to go by and I don't want to forget about it.
And that, that's with the water department?
Mm-hmm.
Bill Spaldy mentioned?
Right.
Yeah, so we do have a review letter?
Yeah, we will do a flow test. Absolutely have to do a flow test.
We've engaged, we've engaged the water department, we have a review letter from them, we're working out some of those conditions in that review letter, and obviously that's going to be a condition of any approval.
So we'll get it in our packet.
You should already have it, it was part of the review letters provided to the board. What I'm saying is, we have to get approval from that outside agency.
Right.
In addition to approval from the board.
Suppose you send us a letter, you said that they have not applied, conformed yet.
We have a letter from the, the water department, and the water department says at the moment, according to that letter, that they don't comply but that they're working on it and they can comply in the sho, in the near future.
Correct.
Right, so I just want to make sure that we get confirmation of that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just a few more for Mr. Ford, and then we can jump over to Mr. Gibson. I'm going to skip the ones that have to do with rail because I think we talked about that already. Most importantly, I think, on this list, Mr. Ford, the LEED, gold, platinum certification, is that something that this building is going to participate in?
The question said, prominent for sustainability, I believe in that proponent. Every building that I've done in the past 15 years I've been responsible for is designed, even as a speculative basis, to meeting minimum LEED standards. What we do is then we work with the tenant, when they're identified, to meet their goals, because a lot of corporations have different goals and standards. To understand LEED, LEED certification, there's minimum standards, and then there are different levels, is somebody educated, in understanding of this question, there's gold, there's platinum, there's silver, there's different levels. And that, you know, is involved with different things. We always put LED lighting in the warehouses now, which is a minimum standard. We always allow for future electric vehicles and all the auto parking, which is a minimum standard. We do a lot of these things upfront as practice in our, in our, in our, in our development, and, and will be shown reflectively on all the, the plans that will be submitted for, for a building permit. And then the tenant, a lot of times, to get to a higher standard, whether it's gold, silver or platinum, it's in different technologies, different materials, different things that they use within, within the building, within the walls of the warehouse, that would actually identify whether it needs a higher standard of gold, silver or platinum. But yes, we use that and are all for it, and on every building we do.
And that application process, would you be starting that earlier in the project or after it's developed?
Meaning the LEEDs aspect of it? The, the, the basic LEED standards would come with the building permit drawings and, and have those standards in there. Correct. So then to hit the higher standards in certification, it depends typically what you do within the building, not the exterior of the building or the roof or the, or the walls or, or, you know, future EV spots, that kind of stuff.
Just two more, I think, that are not duplicative. Will the applicant be required to obtain a major access permit? That would be from the NJDOT. The answer to that question is no, because we're not located on a state highway.
Right.
I think, there, there was a question about, will this project be similar to the Harry Shoup Industrial Park in Wharton, New Jersey? Frankly, none of us were familiar with that, so...
Yeah, we, we saw some pictures of it, but not familiar with that, with that development.
Can you restate that question? I didn't...
Yeah, the question was 67, is it intended to be similar to the Harry Shoup Industrial Park in Wharton, New Jersey?
Not familiar with that.
So, I, we're, none of us were familiar with it either. But the rest of the questions, I think, on that final sheet are largely duplicative of what we've already addressed. So, I, I, up to the board how you want to run this, but I was...
Can I ask a question about the rail before we leave?
Yeah, absolutely.
We've been talking about 16 cars can come in or less at any given time with product.
Yes.
How many cars are going to leave with product?
That, once again, is, is up to, to the user of their operation, would be identified with, with build, with a, a business permit before, before they move that thing. There is a possibility always of outbound rail. Yes, there is, just like track.
That's a huge impact. We need to talk about that in traffic, I understand, but I think that's something huge that's been a question that really we need to...
The, the, the main, one of the main reasons why is because, you know, there are in the rail world finished products that do go out. It is a possibility, so if we want more clarity on that, Councilwoman and...
I'm sorry.
Oh, Mr. Parker?
Okay.
Doctor Parker?
Sorry, sorry, Doctor, can see you there.
That's okay, I can see you either.
Is, yes, that, that is a possibility. Understand in how the NYSNW, specific to this project, runs their operations, their goal is to, once again, as I said earlier, every time you touch it, it costs money. So the reality is that until all 16 spots are unloaded, potentially reloaded, okay, and, and, and that's dealt with, they're not, they're not in the business of switching one car or two cars at a time and having rail operations.
I think the question that, that, if I understand what he's saying, because I have the same question, is there's a big difference, and I think what we need to have a clear understanding of is, okay, it's great to get four trucks off the road, you testified that four trucks is one rail car. That's great. So, I guess the question is, okay, now we have four trucks with the stuff in the warehouse, so the question is, how many trucks are taking it out versus, is there a percentage of all of that that's going to go rail to rail? So a truck is not going to hit the road. So, that is, I think, what we're looking for clarification on. Is it rail to rail? Is it, you know, what's the percent of anticipated rail to...
It's, it would be, it would be very little.
We are, we already agreed that, I, I think we already agreed that we were going to, we were going to provide that information, so...
That's fine, I'm just trying to clarify, and I know that he has a mask on, so people might not be able to hear.
Fair enough.
What he asked, and I just want to be clear that everybody can understand the question he has.
And I, I totally agree, I just, I don't want to spend so much time on it.
That's fine.
We recognize we need to provide you with information, and I do want to get through our traffic testimony. So, that, that's actually all, those are the questions from the first hearing. Believe it or not, we got through the whole list, and I know we're, we're running up against, you know, the timeline, we want to give the public a chance to speak.
Yeah.
But I do think we can get through Mr. Gibson's direct in about 20 minutes, and then everybody would be available.
So we've got 15 minutes roughly until we open it up to the public.
Yes.
I think first we need to open it up to the board to make sure that we've satisfied all the questions from Mr. Ford directly, and then we can talk. I think my hesitation is, I don't want you to rush through the traffic piece.
Fair enough.
We've got 15 minutes to cover this.
And you also have to factor in questions from the board itself, so if everything that goes forward from that point on takes away from the public, I'm softly allocated.
Understood.
And, and just given the, given the time that we're at right now, I, I want to make sure that we have enough time for the participants, in both the best of you and, and the audience here.
Fair enough.
So, if we could, what I'd like to do is, Diana, maybe do just a, a roll call for any remaining questions that we've got specific for Dr. Ford, or for Mr. Ford at this time?
Can you move it to the corner?
No, at this time.
Mr. Murphy?
Just one, just a clarification, there is no manufacturing going on in this building.
No, it's not intended for manufacturing, and it's not, no.
Okay. When you talk about packing, is that another term for repackaging? In other words, if you break down a skid, you take part of the product out and you coming along with some other skid, you call that packaging?
That could be a repack operation?
Repack?
Yes, it could be, yes.
That's all I have.
Yes.
Councilwoman, have a...
Yeah, the only thing, and I, I guess it's not really a question, I just want it to be addressed when we look at the rail situation, is that it looks to me like the rail crosses Route 15 and either comes in under the overpass, under, you know, under Route 15 and then goes out over Route 15.
Sorry.
I want to make sure, or at least find out if there's ever a possibility of that blocking the road whilst being unloaded. It looks like because the transfer station is on, on the end of the loop, that that would be where all of that gets done, and it wouldn't, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah, so I think what we're going to do, and just speaking with Mr. Ford, is, obviously we're, we're going to go to public comment, I think, after this, right? So we're going to skip over the traffic for, for tonight, we're going to come back with that. I think what we'd like to do is, when we do bring back our traffic expert, that we also either incorporate some of this rail testimony into the traffic testimony, or we have a separate expert if necessary, but that would be addressed at the same time. So, all the train questions and rail questions we came up with tonight, fair enough message received, and we'll address those in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. Eske?
I have no further questions.
Mr. Eske, no questions?
Councilwoman, please. I just have one question at this time. So, I know that at, at the, at the end of the last session, you know, we, we gave you the questions, and I appreciate the fact that you answered them, but in the interest of full transparency, in the interest of being able to get this information out to anyone who's interested, is it possible for you to put in writing the answers that you gave us here, so that it can be posted with the application, so that anyone that has concerns or anyone that's not here this evening can access the answers to those questions from our planning board site, so it could be added as, you know, part of the packet moving forward?
Yes.
So, yeah, so we, we do have the court reporter, we're going to get transcripts of both the first hearing made.
Okay.
And this hearing, and we'll submit those to the board.
I, I just want to make sure, I wanted to ask, just to make sure we get it on the site, so that people have access to the answers that you provided based on the questions.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Yes.
And I, that's all I have at this point.
Mr. Ford?
No questions at this time, I'll wait till everything's finished.
Mr. Murphy?
No questions.
Mr. Murphy, Scotty?
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions, just to confirm, Mr. Ford.
Yes, sir.
There's not going to be any hazardous material of any type stored on this site, right?
No hazardous, no hazard materials, no.
And is there any way to, you know, verify that through the tenants that may come on that, that won't occur? Do you guys have a process or something that's part of...
That is, that, that, they need to be with the fire department as well before they, first of all, approve their operation.
Okay.
You know, there are different aerosols, those type of things, used in different types of packaging and stuff, that all has to be approved by the fire department 100% before that tenant has allowed to occupy the building, and they have regular inspections of that as well.
Okay, very good, I just wanted to get clarity on that.
Just, just as much as, as Councilman Murphy talked about, the clearance between the fire, fire suppression system, the ESFR system, and the top of rack, that's something that the fire department regularly reviews, approves in their design and manages for, for a likely safety issue. I've seen it where some warehouses have tried to stack it too high, it's caused a problem to sprinkle it in, the head cannot work in, in a correct fashion. But the fire department has regular access to, to ensure that, no, no hazardous, and we as owners do not want hazardous materials in every form and fashion stored on the property.
And just to be clear, the, any applicant that comes, that wants to use, you know, the proposed warehouse.
Yes.
Cannot just call you up one day and say, hey, I'm bringing my stuff, because they need to go through every single thing in front of the boards, with the reports, with everything, and they all need to individually be approved. So I just want to be clear that there is a whole nother process, and every single, we have warehouses all over White Lake, and, and all of them follow the exact same procedure. So, they don't just build a warehouse out, you know, like everyone that's out there has them.
And we put wherever we want it, no.
They don't just build them and invite people in.
No.
Every single tenant has to come through the board.
They need a complete, you know, I, I've read the Sparta coordinates, in, in the rules and the regulations, they need to be with the, the, the police department, the fire department, the water department, all utilities, or have a, a group forum to discuss all these things.
Have a hearing.
They need an operating plan. They can't just walk in and say, we have no operating plan, we're just going to throw stuff in the warehouse. They need a complete operating plan to present to you ahead of time, that is very, is 100% common and typical in most communities, and I know it exists here.
Very good. And then can you just clarify the hours of operation, both for the trucking end and again the rail side of the business?
So, so the rail, once again, presently the NYSNW is all I can go by what they do right now. They only switch in and out, a maximum of 16 cars in and out for our specific facility here would be from 5:00 PM till 5:00 AM. And, this is not designed or, nor intended to be a 24-hour operation, there's always a possibility, I can, until we identify the tenant and bring it before you, bring that tenant before you, to identify whether they're going to have one shift, two shifts, or, you know, propose to you a 24-operation, which most warehouses don't do, they can't find the people to work. They can't find them. They don't want people working, there, there's no more such thing as a graveyard shift for the amount, for the amount of wages they pay.
That's all the questions I have.
Chairman, can I bring it?
No, I think at this time, I, I don't have any additional questions for Mr. Ford, anyway. So I, I appreciate your testimony, and, you know, with regards to the operations, which again I know is limited right now, in terms of what we've got sidelined into, in terms of the, the types of tenants or, or anything else like that. So, I appreciate your testimony.
Thank you, Chairman.
So, what I would probably propose at this point, so it's 8:50 now, I do want to leave at least a minimum of an hour, and like, why don't we take a five-minute break?
Recession.
Let everybody recess, let everyone just stretch their legs for five minutes, and then we will, we will reconvene and open it up to the public.
Mr. Cohen, if you could please speak? We have followed their past, the questions of this application.
We need a...
Yeah.
Can you guys hand him a microphone?
Can we get a microphone, please?
This time we'll get to...
Hello? There we go.
Good to hear you.
The procedure that's been followed in the past, as indicated by Mr. Collins, was that the two attorneys that made appearances would get to ask, we have not cross-examined neither myself nor Mr. Dash, Mr. Ford. I'd like that opportunity, I don't know if that's going to be part of the public, or if that's going to be separate, or how the board wants to handle it.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I can, too, and I, Mr. Collins, sorry if I'm jumping in, but we certainly intend to make all of the witnesses available for cross-examination, specifically for Mr. Cohen, Mr. Dash, and, and our intention is probably after, we want to give the public an opportunity to speak.
Yeah.
But, but probably after we, we give the public an opportunity to speak, there's going to be a hearing where we just go through cross-examination of people who have not been cross-examined. I believe our architect has not been cross-examined either. So, we are making them all available, but, but certainly, Mr. Cohen, I want to provide the opportunity, we're intending to make them available, so...
Mr. Chairman, Tom Eisenberg, Sparta resident, you mentioned this hearing will, this meeting will end at 10:00. I think most of the questions are going to be about traffic, and so the proposed, the proponents, whatever we call them.
Sir, uh...
Are just going to say, well, look at our traffic report.
Sir?
Can you...
Sir?
What?
Sir, you're not an attorney, so please raise your right hand.
Sure, of course.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
And please state your name and address.
Tom Eisenberg, 128 Sussex Mills Road, Sparta, New Jersey. I'm wondering, can we extend this meeting tonight to 10:30 and give them the next half hour to, to present the traffic report? Because most of the questions are going to be traffic, and they're just going to say, oh, here's our traffic, wait to hear it. I think in the interests of efficiency, it might make sense to do that, sir, just my suggestion. Thank you.
That's not going to be enough time for the traffic.
I'm sorry, can you speak louder?
Yeah.
That's not going to be enough time for the traffic, because I have lots of questions about it. The board cannot get through the traffic report in less than an hour without allowing the public time to speak.
You're on the board.
Yes, I'm over there.
Okay.
So if we decide to go your way, then the public will not be allowed to speak today.
Yeah, and I...[1621.41]
I don't think that's a good solution.
I understand, thank you. Well, that's good. You should ask a lot of questions.
So, Mr. Cohen, I guess directly back to your question with regards to cross-examination, I would agree, I think we're not going to have time this evening for the direct cross-examination. I absolutely do want to open it up, and we are more than happy to have yourself, Mr. Dash, any of the attorneys cross-examine any of the witnesses.
Okay.
What I'd like to recommend is maybe, you know, we start that at the next meeting. I just, I want to be cognizant of the public.
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
I just, and I know this board, and I don't know how many of you have been longtime members, this is an application that's going to take many meetings.
Agreed.
All right? I don't know if the board's considering any special meetings, I just raised that issue, but you know, you're talking about probably another half a dozen meetings.
I have another suggestion, Chairman, if I may, one more.
Yeah, please, everybody, like I, we're on break for just a couple of minutes, and then we'll open it up for the public.
Given all the people here and outside, can the next meeting perhaps be at the elementary school auditorium next to the library? Because it can handle more people. And there's a lot of citizens outside that probably would like to be inside. So if you could possibly move it to a bigger forum, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, because I think that'll give us a better, that'll give us a better idea.
Okay, so, anyone that's interested in speaking, I'm going to start a, I'm going to take names down so that we don't have to have a line that goes all the way around. So if you want to come right in front of me, I'll start putting everyone's names on this list, and then this way you could sit down and not have to wrap all around in a line.
All right, so it's nine o'clock. I'd like to bring our meeting back to order. So at this point, we're going to open it up to the public. As a reminder, again, these are, given the judicial nature of these proceedings, we'll need anybody that has questions to please come up, be sworn in with your name and address. Ask any questions that are specific to any of the testimony that's been previously provided. So again, this is, this is an opportunity for anybody in the public to address anything that's been addressed by Mr. Ford from an operations perspective, from the civil engineer, from the architect that we heard from. So at this point, I will open it up to the public. If anybody would like to come up to the microphone and ask any specific questions.
So I have the list.
No.
I have the list of people who wanted to speak in an effort to make things easier for everyone.
Thank you, Chris.
Rather than have everyone line up at the doors. So the first one up was Anthony Ragno.
Yeah, we have, we have one hour, so just please, please be conscious of when you are asking your questions. We do want to try to get to as many people as we possibly can this evening.
Okay.
The meeting adjourns at ten o'clock, so we've got a full hour for this.
Okay.
And obviously, we'll continue to move forward after that, but just...
Mr. Ragno, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
And please spell your last name and give us your address.
Anthony Ragno, R-A-G-N-O, 35 North Church Road, Sparta.
Please go ahead.
So the question was just to clarify more about the operation of the railroad from 5:00 PM to 5:00 AM. I think that the question for a lot of people is, is that the only time that the tractor-trailers would be coming in and out, or is that going to be twenty-four hours?
No, the tractor-trailers typically would, would come in and out during the day.
Right, so then, okay.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ragno.
Next up, Scott Fadden.
Yes, hi. My name is Joe.
Are you Scott Fadden?
He's Vansper.
Wait, what's his name? I want to add him to the list. Excuse me, sir.
Mr. Sir.
Sir, what's your name? I'll add you to the list. What's your name?
Joseph.
Joseph?
Sir, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address.
Scott Fadden, F-A-D-D-E-N.
Thank you, Scott.
3 Terryland Drive, Sparta, New Jersey.
Please go ahead.
Okay, I'm just having a hard time understanding if we're building a warehouse with 191 bays, and we have no idea who the tenant is, what the product is, and any of that. I mean, how could you answer any question here tonight without knowing any of those answers? To who the tenant is and what the product is?
And once again, this is a pre-approval for the Shell and Core, the warehouse operation. There's other processes to come that are managed by the board, the city, and others before a tenant occupies, before the type of exact product they use, and all that. That is all a future approval process. So this is just the beginning of the process. The reason why, in the warehouse business across the country, we need to build a speculative type development, building, we need to get the main part of it up, is because by the time that that warehouser, operator, consumer goods company makes a decision they need warehouse space in this location for a certain reason, we don't have enough time to build it and deliver that product. So we need to spec warehouse, just like in residential, just like in retail, when you needed the retail center across fifteen north of Wilson Road. The developer didn't know every, every, I don't, you know, operator of the restaurants and all those type of things. You need to be approved ahead of time, have, have the speculative building available, and then work with the city on the next steps of identifying who that tenant may be, the type of product, and get that approved at a future date. So part of that is those who are in the trades or understand it is that the lead times nowadays, because of supply and balances of getting steel, are way longer than they used to be, than we did even a year ago. It takes almost twice as long to get steel, roof decking, bar joists, those type of things, roofing materials, whether, you know, TPO, insulation, those kind of things. The lead times on getting that, because it's not available in the market across the country, are drastically longer. So we need to get all of that approved, so it's, once again, a step-by-step process. So under which we're here asking tonight is a preliminary site plan approval, and then there are three more processes, actually more than that ultimately, with all the DOT approvals, with the DEP approvals that we need to get. It's just, it's a puzzle. It's a step-by-step. And just like, just like, you know, the operation I've talked about, the warehouse, it's like, it's like a ballet. It's a very intricate, you know, plan that will presented, be presented in a big manual to this board before anything's approved and actually allowed to move in. So I am risking millions and millions of dollars to build this and not even having approval that they would approve the potential tenant we want to put in the building. But that's what unfortunately we have to do in our business nowadays, because of the fact that, as I use, I hope nobody works for Procter and Gamble in the room, but I use as an example, Councilwoman, because they're a big consumer goods company. They make a lot of the things that we, you know, use every day in healthcare, beauty care, that type of stuff. When they are ready to say, "We need a warehouse," they get contacted through our marketing group, our brokerage, or us direct, through a direct relationship, and say, "We need it in two months or three months." Well, to build this, as you all know, would take, is going to take fifteen months, once we actually get our fourth approval of a building permit, before it can even actually break ground. And that is also not indicative of the DEP process we need to go through for stormwater management, for all the different aspects of the project in general. So this is way early on, before we identify exactly, you know, who it is that will be in the building.
Yeah, but you're answering these questions tonight as if you know that is true, or, you know, all your answers to the questions tonight. I mean, you don't know, and when you're desperate to rent it to a tenant, you're going to rent it to whoever, you know, you can. You know, it's a gamble building two warehouses with 191 bays, and then when you gamble and you lose, you get desperate and you start renting out to anybody you want, anybody you can. And that's, and that's, you know, that's the worry for us, is we don't know. The biggest worry in life is the great unknown.
Sure.
Right or wrong?
Totally agree.
So that's our problem, is we're out here, we don't know. And guess what? We've got to live with all this. We've got to live with it every day. And that's, and that's the basic problem. That's the truth. That's the only answer that was true tonight. Thank you.
Next person up is Phil Rizzo. Phil Rizzo?
Mr. Rizzo, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm, your right hand, please?
I'll raise my left.
Okay. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
And please spell your last name and give us your address.
R-I-Z-Z-O, 45 Millbrook Road, New Vernon, New Jersey.
I'm sorry, please state your name.
Philip Rizzo.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
I think it's important, as I sit and I listen to this, I'm a former resident of Sparta for eleven years. I lived in an area near the Sparta Athletic Club, which was south of the proposed area. Our main business office is up in Hamburg, and even though I've moved out of Sparta now, even five years ago plus, many times I found myself going past the high school and snaking back through that way to get out to Route 94, because of the bottleneck traffic that was already existing from going from two lanes to one lane, and this is even pre the ShopRite development that's been built there. And so I've watched this happen along the time. And so, three generations in, I am not anti-development. That is our family's business as well. The three industrial buildings at the base of Route 15 and Route 80 where Granger was for a number of years, our family built, back when I was just born. And so I'm not opposed to development and things like that. But as I watch this, and as a former resident, understanding the traffic, I think what the major concern here is just going to be echoed now, only because the other gentleman just spoke before me, is the great unknown. And I feel that the pulse in the room tonight is the anxiety of not knowing what this is going to do to families. People move out to Sussex County, including myself, when we moved out here in '04, for space, for green, for this time. And I guess my question is, not in a derogatory way, but, but what would be the purpose in a community like Sparta, as this being the identified location, when there are a lot of areas off of Route 80, even from 15 towards Pennsylvania, a more, you know, open thoroughfare than up Route 15 and near Route 94 with all this residential, where there's already a congestion issue? I guess that's my, my basic question for tonight. How did we identify this location?
Number one is because the, the use has been approved for years. It has been, and it's been an existing, you know, construction materials operation, for what I've been told, you know, well over fifty years. It used to be actually mined as well. So when you think about the amount of truck traffic, which our expert will get into his traffic impact study, the amount of truck traffic that presently comes in and out, and with other users, but I'll be specific to our property in the area, with, you know, dust and sand and those type of things, we truly believe that this is a much more cleaner and efficient operation to the community. We believe that it's going to create a great tax base for the community. We believe it will create, you know, jobs and opportunities for the community. So I am the first to understand, because I've been doing this for so long, that, you know, the unknown is scary. Totally acknowledge and admit that, understand it, because that's how I feel as a person, an individual as well. Totally understand that change is scary for people. It's scary for me too, in life. But as you said, you know, your business and your family, we understand it, that, you know, it's effective of what we as consumers, how we buy, how we spend, all those type of things, is an evolution of what we call supply chain. So ultimately, to answer your question about the type, type is because I am a big believer that rail is a big benefit for reduction in traffic and emissions and those type of things. You know, our federal government alone has mandates that are coming out. We can't control those. I can't. Your senator, your congressperson can control those. But there are mandates coming out about, about emission, reduction standards, those type of things. And I have worked with the railroads for over thirty years, and am a big believer that they are a benefit for reduction in our, you know, the dire need for roads being rebuilt, widened, all those type of things. And you're right, at points, I drive it all the time now, presently, since the past year, you know, that I've been involved, is that understanding that even get farther down south towards 80, it gets worse. You're right.
Sure. And so, so just, the rail is the ultimate answer to that question, is the rail. And you mentioned the federal, and so, as you mentioned that, I'm currently a candidate to run for Congress in the 7th District, which covers Sparta and this area. And so I would like to keep a close watch on this, not only because it's going to affect my commute to the Hamburg office that we have, not so much as a resident anymore, but to look out for my future constituents. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Okay, next, um, next is Jill Snyder. Sydor, sorry, I'm so sorry. S-Y-D-O-R, sorry, I'm sorry.
Jill, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
And please state your name and spell your last name and give us your address.
Jill Sydor, S-Y-D-O-R, on 25 Fox Hollow Road, Sparta. Just a little closer to the microphone. Can you hear me? Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Should I repeat that, or are we good?
No, I think you're, you're good. Specific question?
Yes. The historical traffic flow from that area versus what the forecasted traffic flow is for that area? Is that information, I would think historical, we would have an idea, like the volume that goes through that area historically?
Yeah, those, so as part of the traffic impact assessment, and the part of the traffic study, we'll hear in the future evidence, both from the Sparta Police Department with regards to traffic flow expectations, as well as the impact study that was done for, for this project. So it, that, that is our next, our next witness, the traffic component. So if it's a traffic-related question, I would ask you to hold off, just until we get through the evidence of it. So is your question, do we have an existing idea of what that traffic looks like today, or is it more implied towards what this will look like if this project were to be approved?
The net question is the delta on traffic volume. So, yes, do we understand what historical's been, and do we have a line of sight into what is forecasted? Because I would think forecasting would be one of the underlying assumptions for design. And that, that's my question. And yes, you mentioned that we had to wait for traffic studies, but I thought if you had the people here, I may as well, you know, take it, take the opportunity. So, thank you.
The traffic study is available on our website, in PDF forms, it's a public reading file.
Yeah, there's...
Yeah, I've gone through the traffic study last time, and it is dense. And so that's why it's helpful if the people who are here have to take the opportunity, by your respective point.
Yeah, so there is an updated one. I would ask, so it's a great question. Yeah, so there is an updated one. I would ask, so, it's a great question, and I think it's a question we all have with regards to, what is the traffic impact going to be today versus what is it in the future if this goes through? And it's a lot of, a lot of the questions that have been raised throughout the community, I know we've got a ton, as it relates to the board, in terms of, how is that impact analysis done? What does that mean? What does that mean for the residents? That then leads into the environmental component. So respectfully, I would ask that, if we're going to talk about the traffic component of it, let's raise those questions after we've had an opportunity for the witnesses to present our evidence.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Beth Broderick.
Beth, please raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address.
Sure, Beth Broderick, B-R-O-D-E-R-I-C-K, 18 North Shore Trail, Sparta. And my question is, we keep hearing that you don't know who the tenants are going to be, and what's going in there. But my question is, why are you building a warehouse if you don't know what's going in there, and what happens if you don't fill it? Are we going to be stuck with a big ugly eyesore right on Route 15, right in the middle of farmlands that have been there since, dating back to when I moved here in 1979?
So, Ms. Broderick, I would say that that's, so it's a general question with regards to whether or not, or what's the purpose, which I think Mr. Ford has addressed in the previous question?
But if it's going to sit over, are we going to be looking at this big ugly thing that's going to turn into a big graffiti collection, and God knows what else? I mean, we...
I don't know that anybody could make that argument or assessment right now, without knowing, I don't suspect Mr. Ford or anybody would invest in this sort of a property without having an idea or looking to actually get it, so it's a usable bits property. I think if the question is, is there potential for this to be left as an abandoned property, where there is graffiti or things like that, I don't think that would be the case, and that would be an issue obviously for the town as well.
So then, does the town have a plan to say, hey, you know, is there vested interest? Like, okay, we're going to make sure that this doesn't become an eyesore of this big 880 whatever...
Mr. Ford, why don't you try to answer Ms. Broderick's general question?
Mr. Chairman, I think that's completely fair, and thank you, Councilor Collins. Number one is that we, in our business, fully understand that there is demand tenfold of this type of space for just this immediate area in this park. So, we're very committed to, and very much so confident, that it will not stay vacant in nature. But it does go into tax rules, once it's completed immediately. So that starts, number one. And then, number two, I am new to this community, so if anybody wants to say, you know, I'm from somewhere else, that's true, it's a fact, okay? My partners are not, though. And I think that a lot of people view this as an open field, a cornfield, whatever it might be, or a flowing field. This has been, for dozens and dozens of years, an existing, ongoing mining operation. Our property, please, thank you.
For the record...
Our proposed property for development.
For the record, we're referring to A1 with our partners here.
The property that we are looking to develop, right, is a coring operation with an existing ready-mix plant. Frank Honkley, my partner's here, okay? That is, before he and his partners even began operating there, was for years for, who was the gentleman saying that he made the operation? Yes, Bob Baldwin, who was at the residents' committee forever, ran the same operation for years and years and years. This has been a permanent, ongoing operation in the form of construction materials. So really, it's a distribution point, and it's been forever. And when our traffic engineer, at a future date, Mr. Chairman, can explain all those details, you will understand that I am the first believer, to everybody in fairness in this room, that change is scary. But we will show you that, can I finish, please? I asked a question, I'm answering your question, is that there are plenty of trucks and activity that's happened for years and years and years, that some of you, or not all, you know, maybe not all of you actually see or recognize, that has been occurring here for a long time. So, this is...
Excuse me, could you please wait your turn?
This is, once again, our property, the A1 property, that's under question here, and has to be pre-approved, has been an ongoing operation. It's not an open field. There are open fields ahead of it, that I understand, okay? That is farmland, that is closer to 15. That's not our property. We have no rights of that. We have no discussion over that. Whatever happens with that property is up to this board, it's not up to us. We have no control over that, and are not asking for any of that whatsoever. So, and when...
Can I ask a follow-up question, then? Since you've stated that you've done this, you've been doing this for quite a while, how long does it usually take for you to fill a building? Because if you're going to build this, and then tell us, well, it's going to take, you know, extra time to get the steel, and extra time to do this, and then when you finally get tenants in there, it's going to be modifications, but it's still a big building. And we don't know how long it's going to take, and this is going to benefit the town, and the taxes, and stuff like that, but it's still a big empty building, and you don't know what's going to go in there, and how long it's going to take.
Well, it's, once again, the type of use they say, consumer goods, that kind of stuff.
Is it going to be Amazon, do you think?
No. No. I'll be honest with you. I have worked with Amazon in other parts of the country. I do not want them as a tenant for an investment in this building.
Can we also be clear that it's not a permitted use?
It isn't.
So, it would not be allowed.
This will not be, I will publicly state to everybody, as a developer, I'll publicly state to everybody, this will not be an Amazon use, with hundreds of vans coming to your house, or whatever, that's elsewhere. Wherever they are allowed to do that, I don't even know around here, where the last mile facility is not permitted.
Not here.
Okay, so...
A lot of questions is surrounded, and I just want to say it again, and be very clear.
Yep.
We are not going to approve any tenant that's a point-of-sale warehouse.
Right.
Storage, where things sit there for however long time, that's all that's allowed. That's all that's in a permitted use. So if any warehouse was approved, it's got to be storage, and it's got to be wholesale. Any point-of-sale UPS warehouses, Amazon warehouses, that's not permitted.
Not going to be permitted, not going to be allowed.
Like a Walmart distribution center, or anything like that?
All right, they're not allowed, those are not allowed in the ordinance.
Okay, great, because I, I don't know, I work in healthcare, I don't know any of this stuff, so...
Right, so that's why we want to make sure that everyone feels it is not permitted by our current ordinances, it's not allowed.
All right, I know you guys have a lot of the questions.
Thank you. Next up, Shirley Miller. Shirley?
Shirley, please raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
And please state your name and address, spell your last name too, please.
It's Shirley Miller, M-I-L-L-E-R, 392 West Shore Trail, Sparta. So, a couple of questions, just in that, I feel like I've heard, and I realize that it's speculation, you don't know who the tenant is, I feel like I've heard some conflicting answers tonight to various testimony. So, one question would be, I know we've said that, you know, the fact that part of the movement of goods would be by railroad, is the Great Panacea better for the environment, et cetera. Is it a guarantee that a tenant coming in, while the rail obviously being right there is attractive, is that a requirement for the tenant, that they have to use rail? Or could it be truck, both directions?
It is, no, it is by the ordinance. Now, it could, there could be inbound truck, and there could be outbound truck. But it is by the ordinance, a guarantee that there has to be a rail use for this property. So that limits, once again, I'll give you an example, if somebody asks about Amazon, I'll give you all the faith to understand this. Amazon does not move any of their freight, last mile, storage, packaging, any of that kind of stuff, by conventional rail. They move by trailer truck, which some people call intermodal rail, okay? But it's an intermodal truck movement. This is not an intermodal facility, it's not approved. It's not approved for those type of operations.
Okay.
But yes, by the ordinance, it is required that any tenant who goes to this building has to use the rail.
And is there a percentage of goods that have to move by rail?
No, there's not a percentage.
So, they could do one rail car every six months, and they would meet the requirement?
That, once again, when we get to the point of introducing a tenant to staff and to the council, that is up to their approval to, you know, to walk through that operation, and understand the amount of rail volume.
Okay, thank you. I also heard, at some point during the testimony, that it was highly unlikely that this would be a three-shift operation, but yet, the rail cars operate from 5:00 PM to 5:00 AM.
That's right.
And the trucks will move during the day.
That's correct.
So, hard for me to see how it wouldn't be a 24-hour operation.
Well, the railroad that switches, as I said, from night, from 5:00 PM to 5:00 AM, as I mentioned, that's typically a two-man crew. Now, in certain circumstances, maybe they have a third person on, for safety, whatever it might be. That's up to the railroad to determine. But when the railroad's taking the empty cars out and moving the new ones in, there's nobody even in the warehouse typically. They don't need access to the inside of the building. They don't need, you know, a manager, whatever, to countless cars. They have an agreement with the railroad, and they very often, they'll switch them when nobody's even present on the premise whatsoever.
Okay, and that I understand. But again, if there's an increase in rail traffic as a result of an additional 880,000 square foot facility, that increase is going to be between 5:00 PM and 5:00 AM, and then we'll have the trucks that are delivering the goods, or taking the goods during the day.
That's my experience, it's typical, correct.
Okay. And one other clarification, just to make sure, and I think it got touched on a little bit with the last question. Does a logistics center or a fulfillment warehouse meet the spec of the ordinance? Or is that a, fall under a different definition?
No, fulfillment warehouse would be Amazon-esque, and it does not fall under, it does not approve, does not fall under the definition of a warehouse.
Okay, well, there's a lot of other types of fulfillment centers besides Amazon.
The ordinance does not allow any, anything other than warehouse and wholesale distribution, and does not allow retail distribution. So there can be no delivery to the retail purchaser, the home, et cetera, from any warehouse in Sparta, including this.
Which means, is what we call a last mile, it's not a last run.
It couldn't be UPS truck trailers filling up and remove goods.
Correct, no.
Okay, so, and then the other thing that I just...
Can we go back, ma'am, you asked a question that implied an answer, that I don't think Mr. Ford intended. You asked an answer of whether there would be increased rail traffic. And his prior testimony was actually that he's just going to use the existing rail shipments, and they will be stored on the nearby Sparta junction, and moved to his site as needed. He didn't actually state earlier that there would be new additional train trips to the area. So, if you thought he was saying that, I'd like to hear Mr. Ford confirm that he does not expect new additional train trips to Sparta as a result of his warehouse.
Okay, that's not what I heard him say.
Okay, so you agree that he did, so he did, oh, I'm sorry, I want to make sure what you asked him, so go...
Yeah, what I'm trying to understand though...
What you asked him implied additional train trips to the area, and I never heard him say there will be additional train trips to the area. So, maybe he could elaborate on how he...
Okay, my question was, if we don't know the tenant, potentially, there could be. We don't know the answer to that.
Could be what?
Additional train.
She means additional trains moving on the rail to Sparta from another place, just because you have a warehouse there.
I'm asking, I don't, I don't, do we agree it's not a question that we can answer if we don't know who the tenant is?
The way this facility's designed, and what its capabilities are, is not for full train loads. It's not. It's, that's hundreds of cars. The job of the railroad is to move a full unit train, as they may call it, or a full train, which is comprised of hundreds of cars, different types of cars. Box cars, hopper cars, well cars, cars for grain, cars for corn syrup, that's, you know, a closed tank, whatever it may be. Cars for the propane that is switched presently right now, cars training. So all that's, we call them manifest trains. It's all different types of car makeup. That train is built elsewhere, Syracuse, down by the port, whatever it might be. It's built elsewhere. It's switched from typically the bigger railroads, like the CSX, the Norfolk Southern, then it gets to the NYS and W at a transfer yard, a switch location, which is not here. There are no interchange points at the CSX or the NS, in Sparta, period. Then, they bring that large group of cars, grouping of cars, hundreds typically in nature, they bring it to Sparta Junction Yard, or a close-by facility, depends on the volumes, the, whatever that traffic may be, to serve multiple customers. And we're only one of those customers. Then at night, from 5:00 PM to 5:00 AM, they break down that train into the cars that we need, in the form of a maximum of 16, because that's what we have room for. They pull the empties out, they switch the new ones in, and until all those 16 are emptied, they don't come back with a live load. And in fact, in realities that this type of operation, in my 30-year career doing this, this isn't like a daily train coming to our building. This would be a weekly type train, maybe bi-weekly, and being completely transparent. You know, this is not like daily you're seeing full trains because of this development, crossing anywhere on that track, crossing Demerit, crossing Limecrest, crossing 15. That's an effect coming from us. Because that's how the railroad operates. It brings in a big train, that's broken down in individual units. Some go to the propane guy right next door, have been for years. Some go to the sugar operation, have been for years, and some would come to us. And have been for years in a smaller capacity. And once again, once we get an operating plan from a proposed tenant, and that's part of the operating plan, it's a big manual, they got to bring what?
A bunch of manuals.
Bring the manual, and it's proposed to, you know, this board, they understand that. But it's got to get approved by life safety, so you've got the fire district, and the fire department involved, the police department, everybody involved.
Mr. Ford, I just want to be sensitive to the other questions that we've got. Does that, does that address your question?
Yeah, but around that, so to that point, I know you mentioned a couple of times, I think tonight, about you have a tenant who has bottles that have been sitting for over a year. Would you agree that, again, it's tenant-dependent? And I did a quick search on Google that says in most industries, warehouse turn would be four to six times per year.
Hopefully.
Not the goods, not the goods...
I'm not sure I understand.
If your goods are sitting for a year, it doesn't sound like you have a healthy business or a healthy tenant.
Well, so...
So, I want to also just be mindful, with no disrespect, but just to be mindful, we have 14 more people that are in line, so I don't know if this is going to be something that won't really be the answer or not, but I just wanted to take a quick break to give everyone a little bit of a place of where we are. We're trying to give everybody the floor, and we have 14 people left to speak.
Okay.
So, I mean, I mean no disrespect, I just want to...
Yep, that's fine, thank you.
I don't want to just run out of time. Thank you. Okay, next up is Ron Peoples.
Ron, please raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples. And please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address.
Ron Peoples, P-E-O-P-L-E-S. I live in Fiddler's Hollow, 35 Fiddler's Way, Lafayette, New Jersey. So, I have comments, and then a couple of questions.
So, if we can concentrate on any questions, because again, this is, the purpose of this portion of it is...
The comments are directly tied in with the questions. So it's setting the stage.
As long as it's questions.
Absolutely. So, just, just so you know, I, you know, living in Fiddler's Hollow, I guess, one of the concerns that, you know, I just want to state, is that it is getting to the point where traffic is increasing, and it is getting dangerous. And the people in Fiddler's Hollow, which is half Sparta and half Lafayette, there are people now who are telling their kids, including me, and telling my wife, there's no way that you need to take a left out of Fiddler's Hollow and go into, go toward, on Demerit to 15. Because you cannot get out, no way, at parts of the day. The traffic is getting that bad. You cannot take a left on the 15 going north. Cannot do it. It's a safety hazard. But my biggest concern is that the safety hazard coming north of 15, trying to take a left onto Demerit. Now, my concern is that you can't take a left, because people will try and go around you. I tell my wife, you do this 1,000 times, you're going to get hit behind, from behind, once. Right? So we'd say, look, go around, go to Limecrest, go around, go to a light, at least you have a light where you get on. Which leads me to my question. I hear that there's been, you know, there's been, you know, traffic studies. Is there a traffic study that has been done by Sparta, actually? Or are they, or is Sparta just going, or are they going to conduct one? Or are they going to listen to someone else? Or are they going to listen to someone else who has a vested economic interest? And just take their word for a traffic study? And in addition to that, two parts, is there going to be a safety assessment? Because since, since the, you know, the grocery store has come in, there's been significant amount of additional traffic. I'm just seeing now, it's getting to the point where there's gotta be a safety assessment done, not just, you know, a traffic study, there's focus on safety aspects. So, I'll pause there for, and those are answered, those questions to the board.
Thank you. So, Mr. Peoples, let me address the, I guess the first question is it relates to the traffic study. So, with the question with regards to do we conduct a traffic study? It may very well be this board requires a separate and independent traffic study. We don't, we don't know. We have not had an opportunity to listen to the traffic study. We have not heard the testimony from it. Again, I think there's a lot of questions similar to the audience that we've got as it relates to the traffic study. And if the board feels as though that there are missing pieces or if it's not an adequate study, we will, in fact, issue or require a separate study.
Drew, can I add to that? Because it's not just the board, because, you know, we're put on here as representatives of the people to look at this stuff. We have our own traffic experts, train traffic experts, that will look at it. And just like Drew said, they'll go through the report. Somebody have a comment?
Thank you.
There's no comments right now.
So, they'll go through this and like Drew said, if there's inadequacies in the report, our experts will point that out. And if we require to look at it, we will.
Would the town of Sparta consider an independent third party to come in and actually do the traffic study?
I think we already answered that question.
Yeah.
The answer is yes.
Yeah, the answer is yeah. If we find that there's deficiencies and that we're not satisfied with the traffic study that was completed and we're not satisfied with the testimony, we do have the authority, I believe, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, to order or to request an independent traffic study.
I think this is a separate and apart. If I'm understanding what you're saying, though, you're saying, right now, currently, and believe me, I'm under 15 too, same thing, you know, I understand what you're saying. Right now, we can say, you know, you're saying that the traffic on Route 15 is problematic, it's dangerous and whatnot, that has nothing to do with this. Hold on a minute, just a minute, please. Right now, today, hold on a minute. Right now, today, I'm hearing him say that there are issues with Route 15 that are dangerous. So, what I'm saying here is that Route 15 is not, so, and not to defend or anything like that, if you have concerns, you absolutely should bring them forward today. Don't wait for this application, don't wait for anything else to get built. Talk to the state, talk to, you know, maybe Steve Warhol's office. Don't wait for more stuff to happen. You know, put forth your concerns right now, you know what I mean?
I do understand what you're saying.
So, I'm saying, you know-
I guess, I guess just to expand on that, I understand what you're saying, I 100% agree. The one, just point of clarification, is when we're talking about a traffic assessment or, you know, a safety assessment, I know that the board, the town, can, right, bring out, you know, hire a third party for a traffic assessment. I guess I'm asking, will you, given the number of people who have concerns about what's going on with traffic and things along those lines, will you do that?
Yeah, Mr. Peoples, again, I fully agree and understand what you're saying. I think you're asking if there's going to be an independent and if we have the authority to do it. And my commitment to you, and I think on behalf of the entire board, is we need to get through the test- we haven't heard any of the testimony around the traffic yet. So, it's impossible for us to say yes or no. Until we have an opportunity to go through, cross-examine, and have that opportunity to go through the traffic report with, you know, with the defendant or with the applicant, it's impossible to answer. So, is your question, is if we're not satisfied with it, will we order one? Yes.
So, just to make sure that I'm clear, I guess I'm not looking for if Sparta is satisfied with it. I think it's so important that when you're making a decision of this magnitude, it's not, if I'm satisfied and I've read it and I've looked at it and I've had my experts look at it, I think it's like, this is a no-brainer to support the community. It's gotta be done. And so, I'm looking, and what I want, do you agree with that? That this is so important, that there shouldn't be a if, or a then, or a potentially? It should be yes. We, as the board, will support it, the town needs to support it. That's what I'm looking for, but, I mean, so.
Yeah.
He said he has to hear the testimony first, is what he said. He said he has to hear the testimony first.
So, I can see that we're, that's not gonna get answered. However, I do have another question.
Well, I wanna be clear, I have answered it several times. So, if you're, if you're, you're asking me for a yes and no answer, when I have not received any, we have not gone through any testimony. So, Mr. Peoples, I understand what you're saying and I understand your frustration, but you also have to look at it in the context of these proceedings. This is not me as an individual saying, yes, I want a traffic study. This is the board, after testimony, putting certain conditions and certain reviews upon, after the evidence is presented. So, this is not me as an individual or anybody else on this board saying yes or no. They'll have their own independent. I can tell you my position and I'm happy to have a conversation with you after this and share with you, you know, that piece of it. But, at the end of the day, I will not give a yes or, I can't give you a yes or no answer because I have not heard any testimony yet.
Okay. I guess the, my follow-on question to that is the roads that are gonna be accessing this warehouse. Right now, the Ready Mix, they come in through Limecrest, they can't come in through Demerit. My understanding is because there's a sign, as soon as you take a left onto Demerit, that it's X-tonnage cannot go through, which any 18-wheeler is going to exceed. Are the only access points going to be Limecrest, coming from both sides to this? Or are they gonna leverage Demerit or change Demerit or anything like that to, or Wilson or whatever?
So, my understanding is the access points are Demerit, Route 15. Trying to think, House's Corner you have out there. So, you've got Limecrest. So, if you're asking, will we change Wilson Drive, or, maybe I'm not fully understanding the question.
Or Demerit. Are they gonna be expanded or anything so that there's another way that those trucks can access this, that building?
Are those state roads or are those Kevin?
Wilson, no, 15 is, 15 is.
So, that would be a question for the board.
Why don't you let the applicant answer the question?
Yeah, we can answer, I think, um-
Why don't you, like, your engineer?
I will, I'm gonna let our engineer answer, and we'll put up our, uh, to the base two. So, I'll bring up Tony to answer the question, Tony. The question is, what is the, what is the primary entrance?
He's still under oath, Mr. Diggins, you're still under oath, you understand that?
I do.
Thank you.
So, can you clarify the question? The access points are on, or point of ingress egress? Not, Demerit nor Wilson, it's not charred. Right, so the main points of ingress egress are obviously off Demerit Road to Limecrest Road to Route 15.
So, Demerit would be leveraged to get trucks to the, to this warehouse?
Demerit Road would absolutely have to be used to get trucks to this warehouse. It's only furnished to a road.
He means, what Mr. Peoples is asking, right.
No, you-
No, no, Mr. Diggins should answer.
Okay, fine.
Mr. Diggins, though, Mr. Peoples is asking you, will Demerit Road be used out to Route 15 by the residential development that he lives in? Or will it honor the same restriction that apparently applies to Ready Mix for their concrete trucks and not use Demerit Road from Route 15 to the site in front of Mr. Peoples' residential development known, that he described to you earlier? So, can you answer that? Is it, are you going to be sending trucks to and from Demerit to Route 15 by Mr. Peoples' residence and his residential neighborhood?
No, we will not, I honor the patterns that are there today, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. And my final part of this question is directly across from Sparta, from the Sparta Shoprite. If you go directly across it, there is an opening that looks like it's potentially built for a road. Do we have any knowledge, does the board have any knowledge or the applicant any knowledge that that is going to be developed to open up a road that goes between Limecrest and Wilson to go directly to this location?
Our application has nothing to do with it, it's not our property. We have no intention of that being a form of ingress or egress to our property.
Thank you.
Yeah, and there's no pending application for any such.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples.
Uh, next up is Kim Song. Kim Song.
Kim, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you God?
I do.
Kim, please state your name and address and spell your last name, too.
My name is Kim Song, S-O-N-G, like, sing a song. I live at 434 House's Corner Road in Sparta. At this point, I would like to give up my time to the Burns family whose property borders the property we're talking about because they are paying an attorney to be here. So, I'd like to give up my time to their attorney.
Is there a question that, that Mr. Burns-
Actually, Mr. Cohen has a question.
So, as far as time, there's no, there's no time that you need to give, Mrs. Song?
But the Burns is our part of the public and we are paying this man as part of the public to help us.
Well, then, he, he- He already asked questions, but Mr. Cohen will be allowed to ask questions. But it will be at the next meeting and it will be after all the public has asked questions today. And if he's representing you, technically, he should ask the questions for you. I'm not gonna make a big deal about that right now. But basically, if- Yeah, I'm confused by, I don't really, I'm not bringing that up. If you don't have a question, you should sit down and the next person, who is not an attorney, should get up for the list and ask their question.
Okay.
Okay, we don't, we don't defer time to-
I bought my house 25 years ago and I know that you just described where, House's Corner Road, it's across from Limecrest and Route 15. I bought it because it was a nice little rural community. Since I've moved there, the Shoprite has been put in there. People now, because of the bottleneck we talked about on 15, don't come onto Route 15 because of the traffic from the Shoprite. They go up West Mountain Road and the traffic has increased on my little rural road by five to 10 times between trucks and cars, people coming over that road. To the point where I can't stand out at my mailbox without fear of getting hit by a car or a truck doing 70 miles an hour past my house. So, my question is, is there gonna be any consideration about speed limits in that entire area where all the cars and all the trucks are gonna be going through? Because it's dangerous for all of us that live there. My house is literally 15 feet away from the road. I've already had to replace windshields from rocks hitting my windshield in my driveway. I have a chip in my picture glass window in my kitchen. I wanna know if any of the speed limit changes are gonna change in that entire area for the safety of the residents.
Yeah, so, I think your question is about the safety of the area. We would need to address that specifically with the safety officers and the police department. That's not a board component. I think in terms of your-
It doesn't have anything to do with approving the increased traffic?
We don't approve the roads or we don't man, this board does not mandate speed limits for- So, I'm not sure I can appropriate or anybody in this board could address that.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next question.
You know, I'll just address that as a council member. That is something that we could request our police department, our traffic expert on the police department, they do do traffic studies on particular roads if there's complaints from residents. So, you know, for your particular road, if you're feeling that there are a lot of cars speeding through there, that it's increased, we could have them look at it and do a traffic study and assess that.
Okay. Uh, my next question is in response to a question that was asked earlier and I just want to follow through on it. So, you're saying now that the trains are gonna be running only from 5:00 PM until 5:00 AM and that the trucks are going to be running during the day? Are the trucks going to be running from 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 PM? Or are they gonna be running 24/7? Because right now, in front of my house, I am awake at 4:00 in the morning and the trucks run until 8:30 at night at least. Is there gonna be any form of ruling on when these trucks can be running in that area? Any kind of ordinance or anything like that? But, or are they gonna be 24/7?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if there's a condition that could be placed or, you know, if you're asking, how do we limit the train, the train and the traffic times?
So, this is really in regards to the noise ordinance, for instance. I know there's certain decibels, I know there's certain times, there's certain times you can do construction, certain times on Saturday, certain times on Sunday, can't have your stereo blasting past 9:30 at night. There's noise ordinances. I can't imagine when they're taking these containers off of these trains from 5:00 PM to 5:00 AM, that I'm not gonna hear that when they're taking containers off of trains because they already just knocked down thousands of trees-
Mr. Ford should answer. Mr. Ford, you take a minute and let Mr. Ford answer the question, which is, will there be containers, boxcar container, railroad vehicles, cars, being unloaded between 5:00 PM and 5:00 AM for the nighttime hours that you said the trains are brought to the siding?
Well, it's not containers, to be clear, first off. There's no lift on, lift off of containers. It's cars, railcars of unloading. And that, as I said, could be food product like corn syrup, so it could be like pumped up.
So, they're opening doors and they're taking pallets out?
He never said that, ma'am, he never said that.
I'm asking you a question.
I'd love to answer it. But no, the railcars are not unloaded overnight. They're switched in and out overnight, meaning that the empty ones, once they're emptied, are pulled out.
Okay, excuse my ignorance. A train comes in, it's got 30 or 40 cars on it, it's full of stuff.
16.
However many, because I can't imagine that you're right, that there's only gonna be one train being unloaded at each one all day in a 12-hour span. Because you told us it takes eight hours to unload one of those, which means you can get two of them in at different times. But anyway, so now I got this container. I happen to be, work for a manufacturer. I get containers shipped to me, I know. There's containers and then there's trains where you open the doors and you pull things out.
Correct.
Or the whole box comes off the train and gets put down.
And we don't do that.
Okay, I'm asking you what you do do.
It's carload traffic. We are not an intermodal-based rail operation. Intermodal is the lift-on trailer or container. You're absolutely right, you understand your business. It's a lift-on, lift-off, that does not occur at this facility.
Okay, so the doors open and human beings go in and take pallets out and put them in the warehouse?
Right, there's a covered canopy system with an outdoor dock area. They were a forklift, electric forklift. They open the doors during the day in the railcar.
Okay.
Those pallets or whatever goods are in there, could be paper, could be plastic, could be bottles of water, could be beer, it could be food, it could be-
Okay, we don't need to go there.
So, but, but, let's make sure he's clear, let's make sure he's- So, what you're saying, Mr. Ford, is the loading and unloading of the boxcar on the property will occur during the daytime hours, not during the nighttime hours. Is that what you're saying?
That's when the operation-
That's what she wants to know?
Yes.
So, you're saying that trains are gonna arrive there from 5:00 PM to 5:00 AM and they're just gonna sit there and nobody's doing anything with them?
They're switched, the physical cars just, you know, arrive in and out during those hours. That's the standing operating procedure for the NYSW railroad, as a serving carrier.
I'm sorry, the attorney just said that they're just gonna sit there and that nothing happens with them? They're not gonna be emptied, unloaded and loaded?
Until, until the operations manager and the employee for the warehouse get there the next morning, turn the light on, open the operation.
Okay, and so at 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning?
No.
So, no, I think, what I heard, please correct me, Mr. Ford, if I'm wrong, but there will not be, there will not be operations for loading or unloading the railcars between those hours. It would occur during business or during the day hours.
No, the cars are moved in and out. No, the cars are moved in and out from 5:00 PM to 5:00 AM.
But they're not gonna be unloaded?
So, but they're not gonna be unloaded? The unloading of them occurs at the same time that a trailer on the other side would be loaded or unloaded, which is typically day hours.
Yeah, yeah. May I add that you also identified that these will be electric forklifts...
Yes.
...throughout the whole complex, which will cut down on the offloading noise.
Yes. We don't use propane, we use battery, we, we, we install as part of our lead process, we, uh, install battery charging stations for the electric forklifts.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Thank you, Mrs. Song. So I think we've got about five minutes left. I wanna give an opportunity to at least hear from one other...
I know, I've got a couple real quick ones. One, just so you all know, that truck sitting at the side of the road sleeping is a real thing. We had to call the police, there was two 18-wheelers parked on our road.
Ma'am, please get their specific questions.
You said that you were going to use this possibly as a 3PL. I know what a 3PL is, because I do this as a profession.
Sure.
A 3PL does sell retail. The wholesaler sends it to your warehouse, they package it, and they send it to the consumer. Your warehouse cannot be used as a 3PL.
Well, then, my definition is, is different than 3PL's yours, but it, but it's a third-party logistics firm.
I know what a third-party logistics is, I do it for a living.
But, 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 once again, as the board has told you, I might have to say it, as the board has told you, this is not a retail operation.
Right, but I take products out of my vendor...
This is not a retail operation, it's not approved.
And I put them in a 3PL, and then I ship them directly to the customer, that's UTS, FedEx, Amazon, Walmart, et cetera, et cetera.
There's no retail.
I, I don't...
Retail is not allowed in this facility.
So I'm confirming that this building will not be a 3PL. It will not be a third-party logistics location.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
There's no difference.
Okay, so a 3PL is a third-party logistics store.
Who operates the warehouse.
I'm a vendor, and I make something here, I ship it into my third-party warehouse, buy the container load, buy the pallet load, and then I send them orders, and they open those orders, and they ship one to Mr. Smith, one to Mr. Jones.
Well, I think, so I think that's retail, which we've designated as not permitted use.
Said before, it's possible that this would be a 3PL, that's why I'm asking...
No, 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 so, just to be clear, so we've, we've identified, retail is not a permitted use in this area.
Okay, so I would just want, because that's not what he said before, it could be a 3PL. So I just wanted to clarify that.
3, 3, 3PL, in my definition of 3PL, is a third-party logistics firm who operates the warehouse. That's a 3PL, in my definition.
Okay, one more. What are we gonna do about the displacement of all the animals? Since the Shoprite has done it, I have more roaches, I have more bear, I have more deer. And if he's gonna store food in that warehouse, what are we gonna do about rats, insects, and all of the displacement of the natural animals, and all the ones that are gonna come to eat the garbage?
Mr. Ford should be... Mr. Ford should answer.
Well, I, I don't know if you, can we answer that question? I, I was gonna say, I don't know if that's a question for Mr. Ford, but we do have an environmental expert who could potentially answer that. He has a consultant, has not testified, but we can certainly add that to the testimony we'll provide.
Can you, can you ask him to comment and add that in his testimony?
Well, yeah, but we're, we're gonna swear him in in a future meeting, and he can comment on that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for your time.
Next one up is Kate Salerena. Kate Salerena?
I should be the last question, eh?
She's here. She's right there.
You gonna swear them both in?
Yeah, I've got three hands, if you need them.
Kate, uh, do you swear a friend to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address.
Uh, Kate Salerena, S-A-L-E-R-N-A, 236 Sparta Avenue in Sparta. Uh, my first quick question is, I just want some clarification, um, if anybody can answer this, if there were any violations of the Open Meetings Sunshine Act with the overspill outside of the chamber, and the fact that not everyone was, um, able to be present for the meeting? Can anybody answer that question?
Yes, there were no violations of the Open Public Meetings Act. Everybody can try to come into the meeting room or the vestibule, and the, uh, the meeting is open to the public, so...
So the fact that there were too many people to be able to fit into the chambers is a violation of that?
There was no objection, there was no objection by anyone to being unable to get in the way they wanted to, so...
Into the room, or into the building?
Into the building.
So, so it doesn't, they don't need to be into the, in the room, they can just need to be in the building?
The vestibule has the video cameras and the audio, and is compliant with the Open Public Meetings Room.
Okay. Second question, real quick, is, um, about the aquifer, which I'm, I'm assuming you have, like, I just heard you have the environmental experts coming in, but yeah, uh, just wanted to be on the record, in case there's anybody listening or paying attention, or this will get out there, that the aquifer is serving 40% of our community right now. Um, the building that happened for the Shoprite and the housing, obviously, is already putting strain on that, and I'm a little bit confused and would like clarification over the fact that the warehouse project itself has a capacity for 400, uh, employees, potentially, where, uh, but your waste, you know, management, um, plan is set up for 2,000. Um, I know that this is gonna fall under the category of all of the myriad of questions that you can't answer right now, because you have no idea who's gonna be occupying this giant building that's going to be an eyesore in our community, assuming it gets approved, regardless of anybody's gonna be in there.
Mrs. Salerena, I'd ask you if you'd please stop, just for a moment. I, I respect everything that you're trying to address in this, and I know you've got a short amount of time to be able to do it. I, I understand that, you know, some of the questions are specifically related to the environmental component, and we, we haven't heard that testimony.
Yes, so just so my, if my question could just be on record, so that, so that that could be answered, um, what is the plan for that? Should the tenant exceed the 100, uh, employee capacity limit? And assuming that, you know, it's gonna come to the board, uh, what are the restrictions? Like, what, what are the guarantees that this won't just be, um, approved? Should the 100-capacity limit be breached? And also, what is the plan to deal with that when that happens? And my, uh, so you don't have to answer that now, because blah, 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 more testimony, all of that. Um, but my last question is about, um, uh, which has been asked several times over, and I think, uh, the community would really like to get any sort of clarification on this, some specifics as to what the actual tangible benefits are to the community at this point, considering we don't know anything about this project.
So, uh, another great question, and I think in terms of the tangible benefits for it, it, it's one every single, every single one of us are answering and weighing, what's the cost-benefit of this, of this project to the town? How do we look at that? I, again, and I don't mean this to be a repetitive answer, but we have not heard testimony yet, in terms of all of the benefits and what this entire project entails. I think with you, very similarly...
Yeah, just, just one would be nice.
So, you, you heard one from them this evening, in terms of what it is from a ratable perspective, or what the expectation is. So, again, this is not, this is not an answer for the board, in terms of an approval or denial for a condition of property. But I would tell you, with regards to, is something a benefit, or, you know, what's the cost or benefit? That's the whole part of these proceedings, is to get through and understand, what is the cost-benefit? What's the cost-benefit? You know, what's the impact on our citizens every day, those that live near? What's the impact for the town? What's our ability for the, the planning board, or, or for the, you know, municipality?
And will the applicants be responsible? Should we need, have a need for emergency services, for building roads, for things that become, um, burdens on, to the taxpayers as opposed to ratables to them?
Again, that's all which needs to be taken into consideration. Everything, everything you're describing is, is, needs to be looked at in the context...
And answered, hopefully.
Again, that's the, that's why we have this entire process in place, is to go through and actually address all these questions, and make sure that we've got all questions answered, before there's any sort of discussion or approval from the board.
I look forward to getting those answers, please.
Me, too. Yeah. Yeah, so I think, um, what we'll do is, so we've surpassed our time now. It's now 5 after 10. I think we have approximately, how many have not been heard?
12.
All right, so we've got 12 individuals that, what I'd like to do is, at our next meeting, continue, this is gonna be a continuation, so our next meeting is gonna be continued on May 4th, uh, at which time what we'd like to do is, now that we've been through Mr. Ford's testimony, uh, we'd like to then proceed to the traffic portion. Uh, so what we'd like to do is move this forward. Similarly to this proceeding, we will open up components for the public, we'll allot an hour, uh, for everybody to be heard, we'll start at the top of this list, and we'll continue to go. And, I, I just want everybody else to recognize that, again, at, at the end of these, of the witness testimony, we, this will be fully backed and opened up for the, all of the public. So, this is not a, a closed system, this is not your only chance to ask questions. We're, we're doing this out of precedent and kind of unprecedented, to make sure that, you know, we can try and address questions as they come up. And at the end of the proceedings, we will obviously continue to allow everybody to have a voice, comments, your opinion, anything else that is not been addressed, or anything that has not been answered during the course of these proceedings.
Okay.
So I just wanna make sure, also, there's a gentleman in the back. Lou? Lou? The gentle, Lou?
Lou, the gentleman next to you.
The gentleman next to you, I need his last name, please. Last name? Okay, so just to be clear, I have the list, um, for the next time, and there are the 12 people on it, I now have the last remaining last name that I needed to complete the list, I'll keep it for next time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, um, before you, it'll take about one minute.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Collins, please, go ahead, we'll, we'll wrap up.
The issue of a traffic consultant for the board was asked, and it said you're going to wait for the traffic testimony. Remember that the, uh, discussion we had at the beginning of this meeting was that there's a certain amount of time. Unless the applicant grants extensions, the board's not gonna have an opportunity to hire its own traffic consultant that deems it necessary. And you don't get a traffic report overnight, it takes time, obviously. So I just ask the board to consider, if they're going to retain other experts at the expense of the applicant pursuant to their escrow, they should do that sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
And the matter will be carried without additional notices to 7:00 PM on March, what